Good evening, everyone. The board has returned from executive session. We're here for our regular session now. It's good to see a nice big crowd here. Video notice, the meeting is being videotaped. Anyone not wishing to be seen on television may be excused. Please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, boy, here we go. Here we go. No presentations?
Yeah, if you could just help make sure that they're not heckling me.
I will. This is your presentation?
No, that's, yeah, this is me. This is their stuff here.
We're not going to. Okay.
That's from the NJEA.
Have your attention, please. Just as a reminder, I noticed this last week, if you could kind of, you know, keep your comments down in the audience, and I heard some heckling of individuals, and, you know, let's keep the personalities out of it and try and keep to the agenda on them. So, you know, instead of hammering one individual and his or her family, let's try and keep them to a minimum. All right, superintendent has a presentation now?
Hi, everybody. So, we want to take a second today, or actually a few minutes, and we'll talk about some of the comments that were brought up last session, just to bring some clarity to some of them, and I think it may, I didn't have an opportunity to, and Janine didn't have an opportunity to take a look at, you know, the concerns brought forth by the NJEA. So, we don't know what's in that packet, really, but we really took a good hard look at the comments and concerns that were brought up last week, and we wanted to make sure that we just brought some clarity to that. So, I just want to make sure that everybody in the room knows the timeline of communications of what we actually reached out to the NJEA. So, on Saturday, Janine, Mrs. Wector, she sent the requested, or most of the requested information to the NJEA, and then offered to meet to discuss the concerns with anything that was there. And there was a response that the NJEA was available to meet at 5:30. Full transparency, we had board training at 5:30 that was already previously scheduled, so that did not work, and we responded back that we couldn't do 5:30, but we could do any time between 8:00 and 1:00. Huge five-hour window. We both cleared our schedules, you can imagine how busy today was, as I'm sure your day was very busy. So, we cleared our schedules and let everybody know. Then on Monday, I followed back up again, just to say, listen, I know there's rumors of hidden money, and I know there's concepts raised by the NJEA at the last board meeting, and there's concerns, and I offered time for a meaningful dialogue. On Monday, May 20th, we were emailed saying that there was no available time, and that really, they did not want to meet with just administration, and they wanted to meet with the full board, which we were given legal advice by our attorney that that should not happen in that way. I responded back and just said, you know, I would have loved to have had a meaningful dialogue. So, I just want everybody in the room to know that we did everything in our power to have that meeting, to sit down, to talk about concerns, to talk about where the hidden money tree is, which does not exist. I won't bury the lead, there is no hidden money tree, and we really tried our best to have that meeting. So, let's start here for a second. This is, I think, a very telling chart. So, when you look at where we are right now and currently, it really comes down to three main things. If you take a look at 2014, you have the year on the left, then you have student enrollment, then you have our number of staff, and then you have our state funding. So, if you're questioning, how did we get here? Where did we come from? In addition to all the things that we've already talked about, the 3 million for this year's salary increases, the 2 million for benefits, the $1.7 million for out-of-district tuition, the million dollars-ish for transportation, this slide really tells you everything you need to know. So, if you can see, in 2014, we had approximately 7,626. Now, these numbers were pulled from the audit, just so you know. And then, right now, you know, in '24, we're about 7,066, decrease of about 600 children. Our staff have gone from about 13,55, all the way to 15,20. And if you notice, our state funding has dropped. So, we received less money, we hired more staff, and we lost children. Now, we all know the funding formula is flawed, they can't, we can't make sense of it, but we do know that part of it is tied to our enrollment. So, it's really, when you look at this, this is the why of where we are. We lost kids, we gained staff, we lost money. So, we had a great meeting today. I want to thank President Ross. We met with Senator Moriarty and Janine, and also Clarissa Rose, who was our Assistant PA. We met with Senator Moriarty and Assemblyman Miller, and we went into that meeting advocating for all of us, because we don't like the situation that we're in. This is a terrible situation that we're in, that we're dealing with. And the long and short is, is that they are going to advocate for us, for sure, but they are very clear that there is no more money to be had for Washington Township. They are very clear that we are funded appropriately. I know that doesn't feel like we are funded appropriately right now, but we advocated very strongly. They were good listeners, but they had some things to say, and Senator Moriarty was very supportive, but, you know, encouraged us to use some of his thoughts. So, our budget has been a systemic problem for years. We've relied on minor tweaks, attrition, and the hopes of more children and more state aid to sustain us, and hope is not a plan. And that's where we are. We had discussions about our declining enrollment. They were very knowledgeable about our budget, they were very knowledgeable about our kids, the number, the staff that we were hired. They asked for information before to be prepared for the meeting, and they are definitely going to advocate for us, but they are very clear that there's no money left in this fiscal budget to just carve out money and give to Township. We tried very hard for that conversation. That was a hard stop. Where we got to was that they are going to advocate for capital things for us if they can do things like that. So, they are 100% affirming that we are not underfunded, and they really conveyed that if we do not address our systemic, you know, gaps, that we're going to be in the same position next year. So, they were totally supportive, you know, they mentioned that they had received phone calls from the NJEA, they've mentioned they've received phone calls from the community, and I wasn't on the phone for any of those conversations, but I would assume those conversations were probably the same. There's no more money in the state to go around. I'm going to talk at the end of this, because since the last time we were together, the governor passed a law about options for the Board of Education, so we're going to talk a little bit about what that will look like for us and what we can possibly do, but those conversations are going to have to be developed and discussed by the members of our Board of Education. We also, just to let you know, we received, I received an email, or actually a phone call, from the Executive County Superintendent, Bob Bumpus, and he mentioned that a legislator called to basically question, you know, the concept of our budget not being balanced. So, he called me directly yesterday, and just so you know, our budget is not, our budget is balanced, it is not unbalanced. There is no way that our budget would have been approved by the county if it was an unbalanced budget. In other words, if we were spending more than we were receiving, it never would have been passed. So, it goes through a full review, right, Janine? Can you take a second, talk about that?
Yeah, so, when we approve our tentative budget in March, it goes to the county office with a bunch of supporting documents. They review it and come back, ask and answer questions. They approve it prior to the public hearing that we had, April 30th, and then, if we make any changes at the public hearing, which we did, if you remember, we had a slide on that, we actually have to resubmit it the next day. So, our budget was reviewed and approved by the county office.
And what happens is, is that when there's an official complaint, it has to go through Legislative Affairs. He calls us to talk, and then he formulates a response essentially on his own, and he responded back, letting the person know that there was not an unbalanced budget. And I'm told very convincingly, and I believe it, that that was not a legislator from our district in any way, shape, or form, so I don't know where it came from, but just so you know, it's definitely not true. Take a second, talk about ESAR funds. I didn't see much of what was in that packet, but, you know, I think it's really important to use words that are true. I always say, words matter, right? So, when we look at ESAR funds, when we look at ESAR funds, you know, last week it was stated that we had $2.44 million remaining in ESAR funds. Not true. So, we have approximately $400,000 remaining. That money is allocated for expenditures. So, it's really easy to say that we have all this money, and we should be using it differently. This was all pandemic money. Now, here's what you need to know. Pandemic money expires on 9/30. That means even if I wanted to, right now, use that $400,000 and put that into staff for next year, I can't. I'm not allowed to. It expires as of 9/30. So, to bring ESAR into this conversation and say that I could save some of our folks is just not true. Janine, accurate?
Yes, that's correct. It has to be obligated by June 30th and then liquidated or spent, you know, spent, so all the checks cut by September 30th.
Either way, it has to be spent by 9/30.
Your mark. We'll get to that later.
Janine? We really shouldn't have the back and forth. You're going to definitely have your time, sir.
So, I'll just say...
No, sir.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ross. Don't disrespect.
Yeah, I didn't do that.
And I'll just talk about how the process works, because the ESAR funds does come through the form of a grant, and anytime we get allocated money, the state has a software platform that we actually have to go in and develop an application, and we take the money that we're allocated, and we put it in different buckets, and we tell the state, not only just the numbers, but in words, how we're going to spend it. If it was for, and some of the ESAR funds were used for things like PPE, some of the ESAR funds were used for academic recovery for students, just as examples. So, every year, we have to redo that budget if we, like, as you know, during the pandemic, our needs changed. At first, it was heavy on PPE, towards the end, it was heavy on academic recovery. But each year, we have a plan for those funds, and anything that isn't spent, we carry over, and we have to spend for the same purpose. So, for the '23-'24 year, this is the last year that we're allowed to obligate it. We're still spending it in accordance with the budget that we submitted. We have about $400,000 remaining, however, it's allocated for things like benefits for some of the people that are doing academic recovery. So, by the end of the year, we will have all those funds spent and then liquidated. So, if we order something, we should do it by June 30th, but then we have till September 30th to pay all the bills and get everything squared away. But every single year we got the funding, there was an approved budget by the state. We had to allocate it in different line items that show how we were spending it, and that's how we had to spend the dollars.
So, let's talk about the loss of state aid. So, when you look at the last few years, this is the only year that, in the last several, that we actually received money. We received 1-595-948, and it was stated that, last week, that really, this is the only year that we had staff eliminations. So, it's just simply not accurate. So, what we did was, and, you know, we went back and we looked at all of our past budget presentations, so we definitely did lose money in '23-'24, '24, '22-'23, '21-'22, all the way down to '18-'19. The numbers that were presented were a little off, so they're correct up there on the screen now, but the fact that we didn't have staff eliminations or positions eliminated is just simply not accurate. '23-'24, eliminations. '22-'23, eliminations. '21-'22, it's still positions. '21-'22, eliminations. '20-'21, eliminations. Okay? So, to say that there was no staff eliminated or positions eliminated is just simply not true. All right, guys, we can't have the chatter. You guys will have plenty of time to come up respectfully. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the concept of hidden money. We don't have any. There is no hidden money. So, school districts can't hide money. There's the rumor, and I heard as much as $20 million, that we're hiding, you know, it's interesting. It seemed to go from 10 to 20, but that's the rumor, is that we have that much money, not only, I guess, in past budgets, but also in this budget here. That is just categorically false. So, what we did after the last meeting, we actually had our auditor listen to the board meeting, and specifically to the numbers that were presented. He listened to the YouTube video no less than 20 times, had a separate auditor listen to it, and they couldn't make any sense out of the numbers that were presented. So, that means two BAs and two auditors couldn't really understand where those numbers were pulled from, and we couldn't understand it either, because quite frankly, we couldn't get a sit-down to have that conversation. Okay, Janine, you want to take the two different ways, the categories of fund balance that we're going to explain?
Sure, yep. So, we're going to talk a little bit about fund balance, because we do have unspent funds at the end of the year that roll forward into different years, but I want to go through each category, because a majority of our fund balance is allocated for a specific purpose. So, the two major categories you have, what's referred to as unassigned, and that's the minimum amount that we're allowed to keep, that we wouldn't be forced to budget in a future budget. So, and basically, it's a calculation that's done every year. We do it ourselves, and then our auditor comes in. It's monies that we're allowed to keep in fund balance and not budget in future budgets, and it's approximately 2% of our operating expenses. So, it's things, it's not recommended to ever budget every single penny of your fund balance. So, you can keep it, and you would be able to access it in the event of an extreme emergency. It also helps with cash flow, because when we get into June, the state actually withholds our final state aid payment that we should get in June. So, in June, and it happens to be roughly $4 million, we don't get that money in June, even though we have to still make our payroll and pay our bills, and they don't give it to us until July. So, that's a really good reason that you never want to budget all funds. Again, this is a minimum amount that you're allowed to have, that it's never recommended by any professional, any accounting professional, any auditor, that you budget, just the unassigned portion.
Janine, pause for a sec.
Yes.
So, the part here that the question could be, could we use that money? The answer is yes, we absolutely could. So, could we take some money and put it towards saving staff? We could. But here's the problem, it's if you debit from here, you have to credit over here, or you have to fill the hole. So, if we use $2 million right now, and then next year, we'd have to fill that $2 million gap, or we have a hole that we have to fill. That's just how that works, correct?
Yes, so, anything that we're budgeting, and if you remember from the slides, and if you look at our budget, we actually budget, this year in particular, $10.5 million of our projected revenues that come in is from fund balance. And that $10.5 million is from other categories that we have to use in our budget. But if we were to budget the other portion, and we don't make it up, that revenue, that $10.5 million, comes down, because we won't have it anymore, which would relate in that, you know, if it's $2 million and we don't make it up, then that's $2 million that we have to cut. So, we try real hard, and we go over this with our audit, I'm going to, our auditors, I'm going to show you details of our most recently audited year, so you can see that you try to keep it consistent, so you don't have an issue like that, where you no longer have that to budget as a revenue. And then, the other category that's on the right is designated or restricted, so that would be money that's sitting there for a certain reason, like capital reserve, like unemployment, or the portion of our fund balance that's over and above the 2%, that you'll see we do use to balance our budget.
And you're going to, well, sorry, Jean?
Do you want me to do that next?
Yeah, and just know that the right-hand side, it's very consistent for us, so we try to keep that very consistent. Okay.
I know this is small, so I'm going to try to go over some of the numbers. So, this right here, again, it came directly from our auditors. This shows what happened with our fund balance, so starting with the beginning balance that we started off with, and this is the '22-'23 school year, we're using this is because it's our most recent closed year that was audited. So, we really analyze this when we're looking at our operations and what we're going to budget. So, the top number, we started off the year with just 29, over 29 million in fund balance. The category that's right under that is decreasing that balance, because we're utilizing it for a specific purpose. Some of the categories you'll see there is reserve for encumbrances. All that is, is if we had obligations at the end of one year, so goods that we purchased or services that we had provided, and you don't get it by June 30th, it rolls into the next budget year. The next line down is excess surplus. So, as I was saying, each year that's closed out, we look at our fund balance, we take the minimum we're allowed to keep, and everything else gets designated to balance a future budget. So, the next category down, it's being used or taken away from fund balance, because we already committed to budgeting it for a future year. And then you have capital reserve. So, if we set aside money for capital projects, that can only be used for capital projects, so it comes out of our overall balance. I'll also have another slide about capital reserve, because while we do set aside money, you'll see that for a district our size, and for the projects that we have up and coming, we have an alarmingly low amount in our capital reserve. So, right there in the middle of the page, as I said, we started off with over 29 million. What we used was about 12 million, and then, towards the bottom of the page, is what increases our fund balance. So, what increases our fund balance, and I think there was some mention, is if you have during the budget year excess revenue, so if you thought you were going to get a specific amount of money, and you got more, that goes into your fund balance. If you have a certain amount of money to spend, and you don't spend it all, that also goes into your fund balance. So, you can look at that and say, hey, they're getting more money than they thought, they should be budgeting more, but that's not necessarily the case, because if you look at the amount that we increased during that year, it was only 11 million. So, while we're remaining steady, and we still have the money to budget, we didn't make up what we used in this particular year. And if you keep doing that, that revenue that I said that we budget, you're not going to have it, and it's going to relate in cuts. So, we ended up, the next slide I want to show, like I said, we started off with 29 million, we ended up with 28, just under 29 million. So, we didn't replenish, that's not necessarily a good thing. I'm going to go to the next slide, because that number that I just mentioned, we ended up with 28,900,000 in fund balance. Almost 20 million of that is restricted for a certain purpose, so it can't be used for anything else, it can't be used for operations. Then there's another 4.8 million that's assigned for other reasons, and these are just, you know, school accounting terms that we use. So, under-restricted, you have things like capital reserve. So, that's money that the district set aside for capital projects. As of June 30th, 2023, it was just over $5 million. Again, I'm going to show you a slide, because based on the projects that we've done, we're at a low amount. The next number down is unemployment compensation. So, we're required to, as a school district, the withholdings that we take from employees along with the employer share that we pay into unemployment, we have to put that in a separate bank account, and we have to hold on to it, and the only thing we can spend it on is when we get our quarterly unemployment claims, that's 1.5 million. The next four lines down is actually the excess surplus that's already designated to balance a future budget. We have school bus advertising revenue, which they basically make us budget half of that in each year. And then there's 6.2 million and 6.9 million. The first number, the 6.2, was utilized to balance our '24-'25 budget. That's part of that $10,500,000 that I spoke about, that you would see in our revenues. And then, the last number there is 6.9 million, which was a result of our 2022 budget that was designated for our '23-'24 budget, which is what we're in now. If you go to the middle of the page, that's the amount that's assigned, so just under 210,000 is for year-end encumbrances, and all that means is, again, obligations from one year that haven't been paid yet roll into the next year. And then, the next line down, there was $4,500,000 that was from the '22-'23 year that we ended up with, that we budgeted for fiscal year '23-'24, okay? So, as you can see, if you're looking and you're saying, hey, 28 million in fund balance, that sounds like a lot. All but $4 million is set aside for a specific purpose, or, again, being used to balance the budget. The bottom part, the $4 million that I just spoke about, is the unassigned, where that's the minimum that we're allowed to keep in fund balance. That's not an amount that you would want to budget, it's for, you know, just to keep cash flow, and if you ever had an emergency, you could tap into it and budget it. So, I wanted to go over those, because I know, like I said, the main reason was because we do have excess revenue sometimes, we do have unspent money. It fluctuates from year to year, but we try to keep it steady, and we always put it into future budgets.
And Janine, so, the 2%, what would have been the ramification if we, for the $4,123728, if we decided to do something different with that?
So, I think, again, if you decided to budget it, you're running the risk of not being able to replenish it, and then, when we went to do, so we just did '24-'25, we budgeted $10.5 million. When we go to do '25-'26, if we budgeted that and couldn't make it up, we would be short $4 million there. So, we would start out, right out of the gate, with a $4 million hole.
So, when you see there's $28 million, there's just really not, and that's exactly how it all breaks out. Thank you, Jean. Great explanation. Let's talk about enterprise funds. This was brought up last week, too. So, we have several enterprise funds, food services, childcare, RBPAC, driver's education. So, the definition of an enterprise fund is, it's an account that's used for operations that are financed and operated in a manner very similar to private business. So, all of these are supposed to be self-sustaining, and they should all pay for itself. So, we're just not allowed to take money out of this and put that into different places, and really, we shouldn't. So, like, for instance, for our driver's ed, which is a great resource to our community, we have a little bit of money in there, but gosh forbid, the cars break down, we have to have a way to fix those cars, or to buy a new car eventually. So, enterprise funds are not ever used to transition to sustain or pay for staff, not their intention, not what they're supposed to do, and we wouldn't be able to do that anyway, it wouldn't sustain anywhere near that. All right, this is really super important, because this came up, too, and I want everyone to understand how capital works. So, when you look at capital projects, let's understand capital reserve from 18A. So, basically, when we put funds into capital reserve accounts, they have to be used to pay for capital projects. The main takeaway you should know about... The main takeaway you should know about the capital reserve account is that once money gets deposited into there, it can't go anywhere else. Once it's in, we can't pull that out and pay for things that are not capital projects. So we're just, we're not allowed, it's a law. So, what happens? And this is how you would know if we had too much money. If we had too much money, we would be putting obscene amounts as allowable by law, which I think there's a percentage of our long-range facility plan, right, Janine, of how much we can put in?
Yes.
You would see us putting a ton of money into our capital reserve accounts. If you saw that, you could be like, hey, Hibbs, you're hiding money right there. You're not gonna see that. What you're gonna see over the last four years, on our huge budget, is that we put aside 3 million dollars twice, and 2 million dollars twice. We're gonna show you a slide in a second, which shows that we only have about 1.2 million dollars left in our capital reserve accounts. So, it was common here, year after year, to cut capital projects, to not cut staff. And what happens is, we got to the point, with I think the first or second slide I showed, with the, with the enrollment, and the staff, and the funding, we reached the critical mass this year. And it's, it's not, you know, obviously, we never wanna eliminate staff, but we also have to be very mindful of the fact that we have to do capital projects. 'Cause what happens is, for a district our size to only have 1.2 million dollars, and you can research this, it is not normal, at all. If something big would happen, we would have a problem. And then that's the other reason why you shouldn't use that 2% surplus to fund staff in that moment, because god forbid, we did have an issue, we don't have much in capital reserve, and then if you depleted that, you would not only have, not have it, but you would not have the money, you'd have to make up that money the following year. So, you know, and it's also important to note that recently, we have mainly used our capital reserve to pay for our capital projects. We are not using a lot of the local, and I'm gonna show you some examples. And, you know, the local budget would be the local budget, capital reserve is the, once it's in, it's in. Okay, so I already, I already kind of explained this, once it's in capital, it's always in capital, you remain capital.
I think you skipped.
Did I skip? Oh, I'm sorry. Janine, go ahead, thank you.
So this is our capital reserve history over a couple of years. You can see, all the way to the left is the balance that we started off, and then the second column is deposits. So this is where, at the end of the year, we try to project what we're gonna have at the end of the year. And what we wanna do is have enough money to, to keep the, the level of fund balance that we're budgeting each year, so we want to make sure we can maintain, as of right now, that 10 and 1/2 million. We also want to set aside money to put in capital reserve, so we can pull it out when we do capital projects. So we try to, the deposit really depends on how much money we have left at the end of the year. The box that's in yellow is because that's this current year, so we, we don't know what we're gonna have at the end of the year. You also accrue interest, so the interest on the account, we can use for capital projects. The next two columns is what we utilized in the budget, and by that, what I mean is, when we had the budget during, from one year to the next, capital projects that really needed to be done, we couldn't afford them locally, so we had to bring in this money to support it. So it's kinda like, the 10 and 1/2 million that I was talking about from surplus, we had to do these capital projects, again, we couldn't support them, so we had to bring in money from this reserve account.
Janine, pause for a sec. And that's another reason you should know that we don't have extra money, because if we had extra money in the local to use for capital, we probably would've considered it, but we didn't, at all.
We also, and then the final column is withdraw by resolution, so once funds are set aside in capital reserve, you can access it two ways. Once, one way is in your budget, which I just talked about, so you would use it to support any capital projects in your local budget, or at any point in time, you can withdraw it by resolution. So we've done that over the years. If you look at the first three years, those were projects for one reason or another, a roof needed to be replaced, a parking lot needed to be done. For the 2324 year, the amount that you see there is the local share of capital projects that we applied for grant funding. So we recently, we actually got approval for a number of projects, but we're only, we can only afford to do a couple of them right now, because we don't even have our local share. So we're trying really hard to replenish this, or else we're gonna be giving up 40% state aid to get capital projects done that are essential, that are in our long-range facility plan, and areas that we're having issues, like HVAC, a failing boiler, you know, windows, and stuff like that. If you look at what we're ending with, after using it to do all of our capital projects in our budget, and do only some of the rod grant projects we got approved for, we only have 1.2 million dollars left.
And just so you know, that, that deposit happens at the end of the year, typically around what date?
In June, so you have to do it by the end of June, and we approve a resolution up to a certain amount. So as I said, when we're going through all these calculations, and trying to make sure we have enough to keep supporting the budget, so we don't have that shortfall, we try to figure out what we can put in capital reserve to deal with, you know, emergencies and failing equipment.
And if you asked us right now, what's gonna be in the yellow box, we're not gonna know yet, because we're finishing up and we're closing out, correct?
Correct.
But what we think is, is that, do you have any indication that we're gonna have any more than you've seen up there?
No, we will not.
So, we're anticipating less. So if, if we would've come out and put an obscene amount of money into there, which we're not going to do, as per our forecasts, you could say to me, Hibbs, you're hiding money right there, you could've used some of that money. We're not gonna have it, it's not gonna be there. Everything costs more. Substitute costs alone are astronomical. Okay, 2324, this concept came up, and I wanna make sure that everybody understands it. So when you look at, hey, guys. So when you look at 2324 capital projects, everything up here, okay? The concept of bleachers keeps coming up. Everything up here came out of the capital reserve account, nothing came out of the local, which means that even if we, we canceled every one of these projects, and said, we're not doing them, that money then would've returned right back to capital. It would not have been anywhere near accessible to save any staff moving forward. So people have been saying, don't do the bleachers, the bleachers don't need to be done. Well, they do, they're, they're failing, they're old, they're, they're a hazard, so they, they need to be redone. And we did them as fiscally appropriate as we could, and we actually had, and we used the remaining steel underneath, and we had to reinforce some bolts, but we, we got away on the more economical side than replacing all the bleachers, which would've been millions. So everything up here only came out of capital reserve. So people are saying, don't do these things, they're saving people, they're not saving people in any way. So, and I, I just explained this. It's also come up last year. Last year, when people got cut, they, they tried to solve that problem by offering stabilization aid. Our, our legislators went to bat for township, and we got about $996,000. Is, these were only one-time infusions. Some of the things on this list were brought up. Specifically, we talked about the gyms that we created, and it was said that, you know, they're never gonna get used. Clarification, our kids are using those gyms in phys ed classes, as are our sports teams. Now, look, guys, you may not like everything that's up here, all right? I'm not asking you to do that, please be respectful. You may not like everything on this list, but the simple fact is this, no leader would've ever blessed using this money for staff. It was a one-time infusion, nothing. So you could argue, you know, hey, I don't think you really needed to fix the RBPAC sound system that, that was totally broken and not working. You, you might, you may think that, that's totally your opinion, but just clarifying, we put these into projects that we thought will be one-time things that made a difference for kids. And speaking with, with, you know, our, our assistant principal and athletic director, Mr., Mr. Kevin Murphy, you know, he is very, very pleased with where we are on these, just to, just to clarify. Okay. Yep, all of those were, all of those were budgeted. Let's talk about other capital projects, and we're really looking at the projects that we're moving forward. These projects, if you said, don't do them, don't do them and take the money out and save staff, this money is already in capital, it can't go anywhere else. In addition, we are receiving 40% back from the state through a rod grant. So, we have needs at Birch's for the roof, TJ for the roof, Grenlock for the windows, and OV, and you can see the, the state, 40%, and you can see what's coming out of capital. None of this could save staff in any way, shape, or form. When you look, 'cause it was presented that we should put capital projects on hold, this is the only money in 2425 that is in the local for capital projects. So at the 910 and the 1112, we have asbestos flooring that literally is coming up, and it's unsafe, to the point where we probably have to look at not using those rooms if we don't do something about it. I'm sure you understand the ramifications of asbestos tile. In addition, our varsity softball field has massive drainage issues, so we didn't wanna shut that down either. So if, if you wanted to say, hey, you know, could you take this 125,000 and not do this? The answer is yes, you could, but then you're right back to not doing any capital projects out of the local, which is just not a place where we can be, it's just, it's just not, or shouldn't be, at all. So when you look at that, that piece, you know, that, that 75,000, sorry, the, the 125 is .08 of our, of our district budget. I wanna clarify this, too, because there's been a lot of, you know, we had a lot of, of very passionate, awesome people speak. Last time, our special education assistants, we are gonna meet the needs of our kids. So we did not eliminate any assistant positions for special ed in the 2425 budget, that includes special ed, specialized in those positions. And just so you understand, item number 33 on, on this agenda-
31.
Sorry, 31, thank you, Janine, is, is seeking to re-employ our assistants. I'm gonna talk in a sec about the options the board is gonna have at a later date, and the reason why these are going on the agenda is because we need to re-employ our assistants. We honestly only did the non-renewal process, because at the end of the day, we needed, we needed time to, to put people into the right spots. And we can always do things better. So I understand that this happened during Teacher Appreciation Week, we'll do whatever we can next, you know, hopefully, God forbid, there's never a time like this to, hold on, guys. Guys? Can't call me out for, for not doing my job, and then not let me speak, and, and try and tell you what we probably could've done better. So, I think that, I think that we could've done that piece better, we were under massive time constraints. You may not, again, might not like the opinion, but we didn't know where this budget was going to land, so we had from April 30 to deal with this, and we had a May 15 deadline. I don't, I don't set Teacher Appreciation Weeks, I, I don't, I don't do that, but I understand how that made some, some people feel, and was not our intention. Let's talk about next steps. So on May 14th, 2024, Governor Murphy signed into law two bills that impact the 2425 state aid, tax levy cap, and budget procedure calendar. There is one part that does not apply to us, and there is one part that does apply to us. We were not cut state aid in 2425. We received the extra 1.595 million, that went to offset the gap that we had. If we did not receive that money, we would've had to have cut, and going back to the first slide, where we talked about enrollment going down, and staff going up, and, and funding going down, we would've had to have cut more things from our budget. So, what does apply to us? So, we, basically what they do is, is that they looked at our state aid from 2425, and they compared that to 2021. And the difference is what the board has the option to utilize, essentially through raising taxes. And that number is 2,093,836. The board is not gonna be, there's nothing on the agenda tonight, okay? I, I can't talk about conversations that would've happened in executive session, but the board has received information, and is going to make a decision about how to use that money, and access to that money in, in the coming weeks slash month. So there are, there are timeframes, just so you know, that are associated with this, that are not our timeframes, they're given to us by the state of New Jersey. So what happened was, is that if, if the board decides to utilize any of that, no later than July 5th, we have to submit a budget to the Executive County Superintendent, no later than July 19th is the last day to hold a public hearing on the revised budget, we have to adopt by July 22nd, and then we have, there's also language in here about non-tenured staff, but I think we've already gone through that process. So, this, this, this is the new process that they, that they put in, allowing us to access that money, and the board's gonna have to have conversations. I'm gonna provide them information, and then there's gonna be a decision that is made. Janine, is there anything else you wanna add?
No.
Okay, so just, just for clarity's sake, and I, I really wanna go back to just a few things. If you saw us putting an obscene amount of money into capital, okay, I got it. If you see us, you know, you know, if you see us changing and being inconsistent in the money that we use from one budget to the next, that would also raise flags. But there is not hidden money in this budget. We are going to struggle this year to put enough into maintenance, or into capital, sorry, not maintenance, to sustain us, to the point where moving forward, to be honest, we are probably gonna have to look at different ways of addressing our capital needs. We're going through an energy audit now, we have no finality to that, but at some point, those things will go away if we do not replenish capital reserve. School districts only have one option if they need to fix things, and that's a referendum. So those types of conversations don't happen where districts are flush with money. Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, where's Kevin? Hey, Kev, are you here?
Here.
Could you turn the, the showlights down for us? How's that, guys? Good?
It's good.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on, School and Community Relations Report.
Yep, I got it. Give me two secs. Okay, due to the Juneteenth holiday, the date of our June food bank distribution has changed. Our food bank will be held on Tuesday, June 18th, behind the 910 wing of Washington Township High School, from 8:30 to 10:30 a.m. I wanna give a massive shout-out to the last food drive. We went from Central and we, we helped, and it was really an amazing experience. I, I think we had at least seven pallets worth of food that we gave to the community, and it really made a difference, it was truly amazing. Clients visiting the Washington Township Public Schools' mobile food pantry are asked to enter the back of the Washington Township High School, 509 Herfield Cross Keys Road, Sewell, off the Gant Town Road entrance, in part near the basketball courts where the pantry will be staged. Clients will be asked to provide proof of residency at the time of registration. Sir.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Correspondents, have a motion to approve the correspondence as listed.
So moved.
Second, have a second?
Yes, please do.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post, thank you. Approval of the minutes, have a motion to approve the minutes for March 2024.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Okay, I have a motion to open to the public on agenda items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's roll. Grace Bobby?
Good evening, Mr. Hibbs, Board of Education members, staff, students, and parents. Good evening, Mr. Hibbs, Board of Education members, staff, students, and parents. My name is Grace Bobby. I have worked at Washington Township High School for many years as a hall lavatory monitor. My main goal is to provide a friendly, safe, clean environment for our students. Did you know that many students aren't sent off to school with a hug and haven't even been told to have a wonderful day? Well, that's what I'm here for. I have been an ear that would listen, a shoulder that is leaned on, and a hug for whoever needs one. In fact, one student even calls me mama. I was heartbroken when I received my notice of non-renewal without reason. However, after I sent an email to Mr. Sweeney requesting a reason, as well as showing me my files, I was confronted with an employment opportunity. I was offered to work two and a half hours per day as a playground aide at TJ Elementary School. Two and a half hours a day wouldn't even pay for my travel expenses. I told Mr. Anderson that I had a total right knee replacement and would not be able to chase little children. Do you know, that offer insulted me. You see, this is the board's way of trying not to allow us to collect unemployment compensation. I have been employed-- I have been employed for 59 years. This is the first time I have been treated without dignity. All of us were demoted to two and a half hours per day and offered jobs that would be physically difficult. Could this be a form of age discrimination? I hope not. I challenge you, Mr. Hibbs, as well as the Board of Education members, to take a day out of your schedule and do the job of a hall lavatory monitor. Make sure you flush the toilets, pick up the paper towels, gum wrappers, and other trash out of the urinals and off the floors. Make sure bail movement and blood isn't smeared all over the walls. And lift the seats so that they don't pee all over them. Check to see that there is no damage or small fires in the toilet paper dispensers. Also check that there is no vaping going on. You would also need to monitor the hall so that there is no fight, so that there are no fights or bullying. Can you do that? Well, we can. I hope that you will consider the lives of single mothers, widows, those that are dealing with catastrophic illnesses in their family, and the husband and wife team that are also, that have also received non-renewal of their contracts. All of those hourly cuts would create hardship, and you never even mentioned whether we would still be on the same pay scale. Or is that changing too? We expect answers. Thank you.
I'm going to try to address what I can, so we're not waiting to the end. So, Mr. Sweeney, the offering of a different job was because of the bumping according to the contract, correct? So, we didn't just arbitrarily offer people positions to do it any other way than to follow the negotiated agreement that exists. So, we had to follow that wherever people should go to and bump. So, we didn't have any preconceived notions of that. If anybody has any questions, you can come in, we can show you everything, we'll be fully transparent with that. But it had absolutely nothing to do with age discrimination, and it certainly did not have anything to do with preventing anyone from collecting unemployment. If you're not familiar with that clause, we can show you exactly the page, but because of those bumps, people had to go to different spots, and we fully realized that maybe they don't want to go to those spots. But I didn't have that option, neither did Mr. Sweeney, to make that value judgment. They had to go as per the language that is negotiated in that contract.
Thank you. Greg Yordi?
How many locals do you represent?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four by now?
Yes.
Even when you're covering that? That's how many you have?
Greg Yordi, Associate Director of Research for NJEA. Just from the beginning, I will start out, yes, your timeline was correct, but to put a little five-hour timeline on somebody that has 24 locals, this isn't his only rodeo right here, and I've got 214 locals. So, to accuse, pretty much accuse, and say that we weren't available in a five-hour timeframe is utter nonsense, but we'll get past that. And just to be clear, we have never said hidden money. Never. Hidden money has never come out of my mouth, it's never come out of his mouth, it's never come out of NJEA's mouth. Because we don't create these numbers, and I've given each of you a packet up there, and you can follow along to make it a lot easier for everybody to see. These are not our numbers. So, you can hire two auditors at more expense to the taxpayers of this town--
[applause]
--to review for 20 times, you said, they watched the video 20 times. Okay? These are not our numbers. These are the numbers that you, this district, submitted to the state. Not our numbers. We didn't create these numbers. So, Document A, if you want to follow along in the packet that I gave you, is bank cap. So, a district can go to 2% of the tax levy, plus additional things if they have, you know, let's say deferred pension contributions they need to make up, increased healthcare. You went to 2% this year, plus an additional $833,000. You had the ability to go to $1,150,000. So, as you can see there in the yellow highlight on A, you are going to have bank cap in the amount of $316,300, or, I'm sorry, $845 for next year. So, if there really was a fiscal cliff, which you're claiming, you would have gone to the additional money on top of that. You would have gone to 2% plus every single penny because you had an issue. Your numbers, again, not mine. Document B, if you want to follow along, is unanticipated surplus. And on this unanticipated surplus, you can see, last year, and we're not worried about last year, with a lot of your slides there, we're worried about this year and next year. This year, you budgeted $3,7041. Not a number I'm making up, but what you just submitted to the state in the budget this school board approved, you're expecting to have at the end of this term, $7,254,415. [applause] Or an additional $4,247,374 more than what you expected. Again, not numbers that I made up or Lou made up, numbers that you submitted to the Department of Ed. Document C, if you flip over, is the budgeted fund balance. Been $10,500 in '21-'22, same in '22-'23. What you are expecting at the end of this year is $11,496,411. And I'm not going to sit here, it's a million dollars more than what you expected in this account. And again, let me just say, 214 locals, from my smallest local with eight members, all the way up to my largest local, Jersey City, of over 4,600 members. This is not my first rodeo either. Okay? So, when a district is saying that they're losing money, these numbers are going down by significant amounts. All of these numbers, in all of these budget line items, which, again, you submitted, not me, not what I created. So, maybe have your two auditors go back through what maybe you submitted to the state, and they will come up with the same exact numbers. If these numbers and your bleeding money, these numbers would be going down considerably. Document D is your unrestricted miscellaneous revenue. '22-'23, you budgeted $595,000. Your two auditors, I'm sure, will tell you, you had $1.6 million. '23-'24 and '24-'25, you budgeted a half a million. But if this holds true, in the 10 years, you've been $400,000 more than this number. Just in the last two years, you've had $500,000 more and $1 million more. S R funds, if you want to go to letter F, let's talk about the reel instead of what was on the slide. Your S R funds, as of '426--
Letter F-- Greg, your time's up.
Letter G, I'm going to tell you, you do not have $400,000. Letter G, pulled on 516, you have $2.1 million in this account from the state website, and let me just tell you, this money can be used for anything. 20% of it has to be earmarked for learning loss. And if it wasn't, then the documents I talked about before, what you submitted, you submitted for salaries and health benefits.
Hey, Greg, let me make a suggestion. We talked about this. If it's okay with the board, our solicitors implicated that we cannot meet with you as a full board, but I will offer you to come in and meet with a committee of the board.
Lou, do you defer your time? Lou's deferring his five minutes to me. And you're going to walk out when I'm talking about your tax dollars. Your tax dollars.
You gotta stop the audience from-- Yeah, please, please.
Make a motion.
Please hold it down.
I'd like to make a motion, please. I think he should be allowed-- That we take a look at the five-minute rule here and allow Mr. Yordi to continue.
I'd like to, hey, Mr. President-- Please, please. Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to suspend Public Policy 0167 that says that the members of the public cannot speak for more than five minutes.
I second--
Wait, 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 wait. That motion has been repealed before. Parts of it have been repealed before for other individuals and members of the public, and I'd like to do the same thing here today to give Mr. Yordi his full time to speak.
I second that.
You can do that, right? All right, all right, all right. We have a motion, we have a second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion.
This isn't the place to discuss it. We're offering to have it discussed with committee, the business committee, so we can go through it rather than have it be a surprise. There's a lot of people here that want to speak tonight. If we give everybody more than five minutes, we're not going to hear from everybody. We've got plenty of people we want to hear.
All right, we've got a motion.
You've got to tell the audience that that happens.
Hold on, please, please, hold on. Let the people speak so we can hear them. All right, we got a motion.
There's a motion or there's a discussion right now?
We got a motion, we got a second, and we're in discussion. Any more discussion? All right, can I have a roll call, please?
I don't think that was ever going to--
Lori, can I have a roll call?
Yep, we ready? Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla, she's absent. Ms. De Mayo?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
No.
Please, please, please.
Mr. Lindsey?
No.
Mr. Lindsey?
He said no.
No.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Greg, go ahead.
All right, so, let me go back, because I did skip Document E. You're state aide, and I'm not going to sit here and say you have not lost state aide in the last six years. You absolutely have. This year, you're seeing an increase of $1.6 million. But to say that there were no riffs, that contradicts Slide 2, in which you said the staff has increased every year since 2013. So, I don't know which way it is, Dr. Hibbs. It can't increase, or there are no riffs. But I've been here a decade, and I don't remember any riffs in Washington Township. Document F is the latest submission that Washington Township has put in for, to use the ARP money. And you can see the date right there in the middle right, 426. And you can see the check number, which you received from the DOE, and this is public, you can look it up, it's all public. But if you flip over to the other side, the next page of F, it says the grant award in ARP funds, $4,187,000 and change. Amount paid to date, $1,852,000. So, when you sat here at the last board meeting on tape, because I have watched it, not 20 times like the auditors, but I have watched it, and you said that you have zero money, you have received all the money from the ARP, not according to the state. If you flip over to letter G, this was the payment summary on May 16. This is the latest document. I didn't do it today, but we did it on 516. And you can see in the bottom left, remaining balance, exactly what I said when I was here last week. $2,88,618 have yet to be. I don't know where you're coming up with $400,000, but according to the state, you have not put in for $2 million. And as I was saying before the fiasco just now-- --of this money, of this total $4,187,733, 20% of that has to be earmarked for learning loss due to COVID. The other 80%, no restrictions. And a matter of fact, I was going to speak about it last week, this is right from the state website-- because you said in your slide there you could not use it for salaries or health benefits. That's funny, because you put in for personal services salaries, $1,376,846. What has been expended by the state? $583,000. On another line item, you put in personal services under support, $768,000 and change, and you expended or received $562,000. Employee benefits, $468,000, expended $12,000. So, to sit here and put up a slide that says that you cannot use those on salaries or benefits is totally opposite of what you put in to the Department of Ed. So, maybe you want to get your story straight here for what you actually put in for. So, again, there is not $400,000, there's over $2 million in this line item right now. Document H, total grants and entitlements. $5,826,678 was budgeted last year. Your audit by your two auditors, $10,988,352, or $5,161,000 more than what you expected. This year, you raised-- This year, you raised that number to 7.4 million. What the number is, I don't know, but I'm pretty confident it's going to be higher than that, because the average, the budget has found over the last 10 years is $1.6 million more than what you budgeted. Then next year, you almost doubled it from 7.4 to 13.9 million. I looked at your PowerPoint, letter I, you talked about increases to tuition, because you keep saying 7 million. And 1.7 of that was tuition, out-of-district increases to tuition. What you're not talking about is the tuition you're receiving from people coming in here to Washington Township, the premier community. The last year you audited, you budgeted nothing, and you had $446,000, or $446,000 more than what you anticipated. Now, this year, you raised it to $400,000. Don't know what the number's going to be. Next year, $400,000. But if the 10-year average is true, you've had about another $650,000 more than whatever you've budgeted over the last 10 years. And again, not my numbers, not my numbers, what you submitted to the DOE, pulled from your audits, pulled from the DOE, and pulled from your 24/25 budget, which you finally gave us after last board meeting. Letter J shows the preschool aid, jumped from budgeting nothing, and you had $1 million more in the audit, 2.3, 3.2, now to 8.6. I'm not going to get too deep into those weeds. But we'll go to letter K. Actual revenues over/under expenditure. Everything says zero, because the budget has the balance. A negative number on here is good, a positive number is not good. You're spending that much more than the revenue brought in. 22/23, you just said you made a transfer into capital funds of $3 million. I don't see that based upon what the audit shows, because the audit shows $2,983,804 put into three categories: enterprise, capital budget, and preschool. And I'm going to sit here, and I'm going to agree with you, shockingly, that you cannot use the money in the capital. You said you have not put any money into the capital, but you're anticipating, what I just heard you when you walked up next to me there, that you're anticipating it's probably going to be about the same at the end of the books here that you put in. There is no need to put that money in there. You can use that $3 million, which you're anticipating, which you just said when you walked up, to save these jobs and health benefits to these people. Document NL, because I hear, you know, blaming the salary and health benefits increases. Salary increases going up by $3 million. Health benefit increases going up by $2 million. I got to sign scattergrams, and I thank Janine for sending them to me this week, and the scattergram of the current WTEA and the WTSSPA as of 5/15/24. If you look at letter L, on the WTEA, when they signed their scattergram, it was 61.5 million. Right now, at the end of this year, you should, on paper, have paid $65,419,454, an increase over two years of $3.9 million, just in that group. The fourth box shows what the actual increase is, because you gave me what the total salaries are of everyone as of May 15. It's $63,874,885, nowhere near the $65.4 million. The savings just from the WTEA contract was $1.5 million you have saved in salaries that you are not going to be paying. Not what you anticipate, it's what is actual. Because when you settle a contract, it's just like buying a car. When you drive off the lot with that car, you've lost the value of that car. When you settle a contract over the last 15 years in this state, the exact settlement percentage is exactly 4%, and I'm sure Ari knows this, because I've dealt with Ari in negotiations and other places. What boards have paid out over that time is 1.96%. Half of whatever is anticipated to be paid is never paid because of breakage. Because when somebody retires at the top of the guide, and you hire somebody at the beginning of the guide, there is savings to the district for the same exact position. If you combine the WTEA and the support group, you are saving $1,322,000 and change of what you expected to pay and what was negotiated. One of the other things which is, kind of throws up a red flag for me personally, but is the health benefits. I requested a health benefits scattergram as soon as this meeting was over last week, I believe on Tuesday. You said you were working on it, of getting it to me. The problem that I have with that is if you're standing here and telling me that you have an increase of $2 million, you should have those numbers readily available to share with me so we can verify it. When you don't share it, I have never used the word hidden, but it throws up a, what I always use, another red flag. Here's the salary analysis by object code. Again, pulled from the Department of Ed, letter M. In 23/24, total salaries of everybody, personnel, teachers, supervisors, administrators, $85,576. In 24/25, when you keep saying there's a $3 million increase, it's actually $84,912, or $664,000 less than what is being said. Less. So when I go out and do this, and like I said, I've done this for a decade, and I see something like this, I don't ask two auditors, I ask my two partners. So three of us, who do this statewide, one who's been doing it for 15 years, and one who's been doing it over 25 years, all looked at your budget, and all three of us came up with the same answer. There is no budget issue here in Washington Township. If there was a budget issue here in Washington Township, you would be bleeding money out of these accounts. These would be going down, much like when a town was wiped out by Hurricane Sandy. Sure, they went down, their budget, didn't get the money from the state to rebuild, absolutely went down. Not the case here. So it doesn't matter whether I'm in my local with eight people, or I'm in Jersey City with 4,600. Again, no budget issue here. Thank you.
Hi Greg. Greg, hold on a second. I personally, and I'm sure most of the board, we're not familiar with the numbers and all you gave us, but I would like to offer that you meet, I would like to offer that you meet with our people. We can't meet as a full board, and if you're right, you know, look, we're not looking to cut jobs if we don't have to. We're voting on item 31 tonight to bring back a group of our people. And then after that, we're even going to decide, do we raise some taxes, or do we have the money? As you're indicating that we do, so we can bring back and substantiate the rest of them. So, you know, you're talking to novice people who get on the board, and they're not familiar with this everyday process.
Fully understood.
Haven't been in the business a little bit, I think I am. But I think, in good faith, that we need to meet with you and who else, so that we can straighten this out. Certainly, if you're right, you know, we're not looking to, at least personally, not looking to stuff the money in our pockets so that we can save it for a rainy day or something. We want to spend it on the membership too, so that we support them. And believe me, we do. So if we could, if you could meet with a committee of us, I'd like for our budget person to be there, and our personnel person to be there, so that we can meet with, four board members can meet with you at your convenience. We have another, this doesn't have to be resolved until, when, July?
Well, it depends what you're asking about resolution for. The new budget date is July 19.
Yeah, new budget by July, July 9.
No, I will say I am more than willing, I am able, but it needs to be with board members, because board members need to see, and exactly, I did, again, did not create these numbers. These are numbers that were pulled off of what was submitted to the state. But I'm also going to be bringing with myself, my colleague here, Lou Randazzo, along with Jerry and Angela, the two presidents.
See, you don't have a number that you have to put on it to meet, we do.
Oh, absolutely, I understand.
We can only have four board members represent. So, you know, we're willing, and I know I am, and I think, I want to speak for the rest of the board, but I think they are too. If you could prove us wrong, you know, we're willing to look at it.
Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I don't know if that answers any of your questions from the yellow cards, but we'll go through them, and I just want you to know, if you, try and keep it, like I said, your comments down. Let's not make this personal, and we'll, 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 I love. We understand that, we're trying to work with you.
Go ahead, Greg. We're not going to be able to address it all, because it's a lot of information. Just a few things from me, and then a couple of things from Janine. So I want to be clear, we do have some budget issues. That's A. Listen, guys, come on, come on.
Please.
We definitely, you definitely can add, you definitely can eliminate positions, but still add positions. It's totally something you could do, and I wasn't here when it happened, but it did happen. I do really do not believe, and I would love to see the timestamp where I said that we received all the money from Esser, because I watched, I watched the video, and I don't think I ever said that, and I think that was the only time that Esser was brought up. We also just mentioned that I said that we can't use Esser for salary or benefits. Again, that's not what I said, and you can go back to tonight and listen to that, what What, guys?
Guys, please, let him speak, let us speak, we let you speak, and we hear you, we hear what you're saying.
It wasn't, it wasn't public, and what I said was, is that we should not, at this point, be using Esser funds for staff, because when you use Esser funds for staff, and you value those positions, when the Esser money runs out, you either have to find it in the local, or it goes away. And that was my point. Tuition in, can you talk for a quick sec about how we, what we do with that?
The tuition?
Yeah, the tuition that comes in, that was something that.
Yes, I can. So, and this kind of goes to some of where we were talking about revenue, where we budgeted a certain number and got more. That's always going to happen, and we're always going to have money that's budgeted to spend, and we don't spend it all. But if you remember from that recap, all that rolls into fund balance and then is re-appropriated. In the last year where we did the audit, we did not replenish as much as we took out. So you can target individual lines and say, you're not budgeting for tuition, but you're getting the money. That's fine, I get that, but at the end of the year, it all rolls into that pot that we're rebudgeting. And if we can't make it up, so if we were to say, well, we got $400,000 in tuition last year, so we're going to budget $400,000 and hire more people back, and we don't get the $400,000, that's not good. So again, you can pick on certain years where we may have gotten more, and even certain line items, and say, you should have budgeted more. But at the end of each year, it's being re-appropriated, and we aren't no longer making up what we're taking out. That's a problem. I also just wanted to mention where we were budgeting, and there was a mention that we had $996,000 more in the year before. That was the additional supplemental stabilization aid that was given to us from the state. So we had to show it that way. It came from one year of the state's budget, it came into our budget in 23/24, so it had to come through as surplus. So for that year, our surplus was higher by what they gave us, and then the capital projects were added on the appropriation side of the budget. That wasn't coming back, and that's a perfect example of why you can't spend one-time infusions on staff. In 23/24, we, 23, yes, 23/24, the surplus we budgeted was $11 million, $11,496,000. Again, $996,000 was a one-time infusion. So if you look at the budget this year, we're back down to $10.5 million. If we didn't use that on one-time projects, we would have been left with $996,000 worth of staff or operating expenses, or whatever else we wanted to use it on, that would have to be cut.
And it's one of the, it's one of the posters in front of us, and when you hold it up, it looks like, you know, you had this extra $1 million. That was the stabilization aid that we talked about, that we had to use on one-time projects. That's not just extra money we had lying around that we could have used for other things. We could have put that, I guess, into staff, there was rules that applied to it, but again, it would be a lot like Esser funds. If you put them into staff, you have to fund it locally. It's not that you can't, it's just not smart to do.
And then just to touch on the Esser, the difference between what the numbers that we're talking about here, we have to, most of our grants, I should say all of our grants, we have to spend first and then request it from the state later. So the amount that we have left to spend is around $400,000, and we can draw down from the state at some point in time, the remaining $2 million. A lot of this is timing, too. So if you're, if we're going to pick on benefits, and say that we haven't spent any of the benefit money, that's true. And the reason why is because we budget for a certain dollar amount in benefits. When you apply to the state and you put money in salaries, it automatically calculates a number for you. We wait until the end of the year, we go back and we look at the personnel that were in that budget line, and we look at their actual benefits, and then we charge that off at the end of the year and request the money. We do that because it's not just supposed to be an arbitrary budgeted number, it's supposed to be the actual, that their benefits cost. So we do that at the end of the year, and then we draw it down from the state. And I just, again, I have a lot written down, and I'm sure we can get into more detail.
Go ahead.
But with grants and entitlements, we're only allowed, we're actually told by the state, because we don't know some of our allocations, we're only allowed to budget 85% of what we received the last year. So some of our federal dollars, like IDEA and our ESEA, they do not, they won't give us that number until sometimes June or July, and then we have to apply in August. We don't even know what we're getting until August. So we're only allowed to put 85%. Then as we're finding out what our real allocation is, we submit a budget to the state, and once that's approved, we're allowed to increase those line items, and that's all in a separate fund. All of our grants are not in the operating fund, they're in a separate fund. So when we're given an allocation, we have to spend it on specific things, and that's what we do. I think, you know, just one other point about making deposits in capital reserve. We have a district that has 14 buildings. So to think that, you know, one of our rod grant projects for one boiler is close to $2 million. So we have one boiler go, and it's going to cost us $2 million, and it'll probably take us 18 months to get it. So the fact that, you know, there's criticism of putting a couple million dollars at the end of the year and trying to keep that going, when things are that expensive and we have this many buildings, and to draft a budget where there's no capital projects, it's not smart, it doesn't make sense at all.
Couple of things, too. You know, pre-K was mentioned, but really... You know, pre-K was mentioned, but, but, but really not explained. So, we definitely, we receive grant money from the state for pre-K. And Janine, like, so that, that main difference is, is all grant money. It's mostly not, it's mostly not local.
Our preschool grant, so over the years, it's a preschool expansion grant. So, they want to see us expand and add classrooms until we get to our full universe of students. We've tried over the past couple of years to increase. So, the increase we're getting in preschool education aid is because we're adding classrooms and we're adding students. There's a specific budget for that. It's, again, it's totally separate. It's accounted for in our special revenue fund with all of our grants. It's not part of our operating fund. And what we do is we have to draft a budget based on the number of students. We get a certain dollar amount for each student and then we're allowed to place the allocations where we need. For example, a class, a teacher in each classroom, assistants in each classrooms, the supplies that are needed, the professional development. It's a very specific budget to say, so to say that it's increasing, yes, that's true. But it's increasing because we're servicing more students in our town.
Yeah. It was, it was also stated that, I said that we would put the same amount into capital reserve. So, that was the yellow slide. I actually turned to Janine and I said, are you expecting that we'll put the same amount into capital reserve this year? And she answered, no. You can go back and watch that piece. We do not think, because that's where I explained, over the last four years, I think it was two years of $3 million and two years of $2 million. So, I said very clearly that we were not going to be replenishing what we, what we had done in the past. At least that's our initial fault right now. And as, as Janine mentioned, and I get the emotions that are in this room, absolutely. I do. Listen, I understand the emotions, but I just can't work as your superintendent on emotions. I have to, we have to protect the district as well. And listen, I understand that, I understand what we're going through. But if we just took all that money and consistently put nothing into capital, what would happen here? It, we would, it would literally, we'd never be able to address anything. So, I think that's what we can address now. Is there anything else, Janine?
Not yet.
I will be happy, we'll be happy to take all of these numbers and we'll run them through our auditor as well and have answers for the board before we have any meeting with the business committee. So, you have all the information at your disposal. Anything else, ma'am? Okay.
Greg, before you leave, would you coordinate your time with Mrs. Baker and she'll coordinate with the administration that we can kind of get together? And like I said, you know, you have your numbers, we have our numbers and we're wrong, we're willing to, for you to show us where we're wrong. You got it. Okay, moving right on. Lou Randazzo.
My name is Lou Randazzo. I'm a field representative from the New Jersey Education Association. I represent 1,300 of our members here in your schools. So, yes, the superintendent's introductory comments were accurate in terms of our response that, in all honesty, Greg and I were both not available this morning from 8:00 to 1:00. I did send that follow-up email last night at 9:00 PM. I was still at the office, not to bust chops. I was sitting at my desk in my office in Mulcah Hill, not at home. And we shared the sentiment that we wanted to meet with the board members because we believe they have the decision to, what we're asking for, which I've said, April 30th and last week on the 13th, that we're asking for them to override the superintendent's recommendation for the non-renewals because we believe that you have the money. And I, I shared that sentiment because I spoke with your solicitor, Mr. Schneider. I checked my phone on the call history. He telephoned me yesterday at 12:16 in the afternoon, hours before, and shared the sentiment that not some board members, a majority of the board members wanted to meet with us. I know you had a training from school boards or whatever. Excellent, right? In closed session, you weren't available tonight. But that was the sentiment of why, so there was no refusal to meet. We want to meet with the board members, the decision makers, to do what we're asking for, to overturn the superintendent. So, that is the genesis of that. But yes, Mr. Ross, thank you, oh, sorry. Thank you for the motion and to allow Greg the time. I'm not going to take a lot of extra time. But Mr. Ross, yes, for this and to meet with Board of Education members, Greg and I will clear our calendars and meet with you whenever you're available. Absolutely. I will say that-- the question, though, for that is a bigger picture of where the board stands in relationship to what we're hearing from the management team. And five, a majority of the board, five or more, I don't know the number, want to meet with us and we have no questions about the budget. I believe Greg's numbers, I don't think we have the need. So, I said to Dr. Hibbs, the superintendent, very candidly, we didn't want to meet with just the administration to provide information for what we thought would be a rebuttal, but rather to meet with the board members to compel them of the true nature of the budget. And I would pose this rhetorical question, you'll have to answer. Board members, is the information you received this evening more than any other information you've received during the budget cycle? And if that's the case, I imagine that's a problem. And that's something that you should give consideration to. We'll happily discuss when we meet in the future. We're here again this evening, still, and I, whether we meet or not, to compel the board again to take a motion to override the superintendent's recommendation. And this is having an impact on your school. So, we've been here three meetings now, or I have, along with your community. And the numbers have gotten larger and larger. And I'll say this, not that I don't love doing my job and representing our public school employee members, but it hasn't been the biggest lift or challenge to beat the drum and get people to attend because they are fired up about what's happening in your schools, your district, your community. They want to be here because they're not in favor of these cuts or decisions that are being made. I would imagine we see that reflected on the agenda. These meetings are public record and you present them online for people to view. I imagine people are viewing them now. And I've taken a glance at the agenda, M. Human Resources, someone rescinding their appointment to want to come here. I'm not a betting person, but I would imagine people are watching this and saying, I don't want to work for this employer. And that's sad. I'm not, that's not a victory lap. That's not a credit thing. That's a sad state of affairs. I want your schools to succeed. That's why I'm here. I haven't been here for many years and I'm here to represent our folks and compel you to do the right thing. And I believe that people are watching what's unfolding and seeing the nature of what's happening in your schools and they don't want to come here. And that's, that's not a positive thing. That's not where you want to be. And that's why we're here, to ask you to overturn this motion. I, I feel that as a former community member myself. I used to live in the community, right in Whitman Square, 917 Forbes Street, around the corner from Whitman Elementary. My parents both lived, before they passed, at Cardinal Village. So, I understand that bond to the community and where your community folks are. And we've heard, besides Greg's compelling evidence, which I find to be factual, a lot of heartwarming stories about your staff and the great work that they do from people that are not facing termination cuts and heartbreaking stories from people that are facing cuts. I imagine, I haven't prompted anyone, I haven't coached anyone to say any of those things. They felt compelled on their own to share those stories. And I imagine you're going to hear many more hours of them again tonight without my encouragement because your community is asking for this not to happen. We've seen, and I've engaged them, but we've seen members of your municipality leadership, right? Members of the council that are here as well and people that have spoken about this at Super Saturday and other events. And we're asking you to find another way. And that we believe, from Greg's numbers and his colleagues in NJEA Research and Economic Services, that they are accurate. And like I said to Mr. Ross, we'll happily discuss those. We are a state affiliate of a national organization, the National Education Association, 2 million members, the largest union in the country. And I've done this work in a couple of other states. Greg has done this in all 50 states and I find him to be an unmatched expert in school finance. So, I find the numbers compelling and I'm going to repeat what I've said at the other two meetings. Ask the board members, very simply, not, not an amendment, but when we get to old business, for someone to make the comment, I'm not in agreement with the cuts. I think that we might have the money. I would like to make a motion not to hire people, right, as was disingenuously represented at the last meeting by someone who's not here, but to re-offer employment to the existing people that work here now, right, for that motion to be on the floor. The only thing that should follow a motion on the floor, according to Robert's Rules of Order and your policy, is silence if there's no second or a second and then discussion. So, we're asking for the motion to be made to re-offer employment to all folks that receive non-renewals at their status quo, the same number of hours, for there to be a second, a meaningful discussion or debate, and then a roll call vote. And if five board members vote on that, then those folks are all brought back. The alternative, if you don't agree that that's in order, we disagree. And I'm not going to make any, you know, hateful comments. But if you don't agree that's in order, as we've told our members, they can pursue their Donaldson rights, their due process to a hearing in front of the board individually, one at a time, to try to compel you to make that decision. And if you disagree on having it tonight, it can absolutely happen later on, on one-on-one individual basis. And we will come back for that. That's not a threat. We will come back to exercise our rights. I would rather that we, to be expeditious, move past that now, especially if there is a sentiment from a majority of the board to move in that direction. So, that is the end of my comments. We're asking you to make the motion to reinstate everyone for a second and a roll call vote. Thank you very much.
Lou, Lou, you're, you're asking us without having an opportunity to review the presentation that you made tonight to overturn and, and disallow what the administration has, has told us about the budget. What I'm suggesting is, like I did before, that you get together with us. If you're right, we'll admit that you're right.
Right. And that's not--
But we can't, but to just, to just arbitrarily, in my opinion, I don't, it's up to the board to just make a motion to bring everyone back without having an opportunity to review your numbers and our numbers. I mean, be fair about this.
I understand.
Like I said, we're, we're not opposed to, if we have the money, I think every board member here wants to bring everyone back at their, at whatever salary and with it, with their benefits and that type of thing. But I, I think it's, I think to ask us to do that right now is unfair.
I understand. I believe it's your statutory authority and it's in order. Your solicitor probably disagrees and that's fine. I'm not giving you legal advice. It's going to be my opinion. But of course, we are willing to meet with the board and, like I said, we'll clear our calendars. You tell, we'll talk to Ms. Baker, I assume, but you tell us when you're available. And I work in 20 other, 24 other districts. I'll clear the calendar. We'll meet as soon as you, you're available.
You show us where we're wrong and we'll admit that we're wrong.
I understand. We still believe they have, you have the authority to make the vote tonight, but we'll, we'll meet. Yes, sir.
Okay. That we don't want to take a vote tonight, too. Okay. Thanks, Lou. Angela Terusa.
I pulled my back out. I'm sorry. Angela Terusa, President of WTSSPA and Specialized Instructional Assistant. So, here we are again after one of the worst weeks in our district. First, let me say thank you for not having our assistants wait until June 30th to find out if they had jobs. Unfortunately, that's where the thank yous end. On Friday, 44 assistants were told they would no longer have jobs. 15 were told they were losing their health care because of a 15-minute reduction in hours. That's nine special ed assistants, five BSI assistants, and one clerical assistant. An additional 26 assistants were reduced in hours from 5.75 to 3.5 and 2.5. We had some of our hardest-working health assistants who possess a specific skill set in working with our nurses and students, not only reduced in hours, but shifted into playground assistant positions, along with our hall monitors. So, to be clear, we panicked almost 300 assistants on Wednesday at 11:00 AM during Teacher Appreciation Week. I guess I'm still wondering what was behind that decision of why and how it was done. I sat through three budget presentations and was told that the cuts were across the board. When the dust settled, it was a much different story. The support cuts were made exclusively to assistants. 44 non-renewed, 15 lost benefits in health care, 26 reduced in hours. Again, the lowest-paid employees here. There were also 36 teaching staff cut. So, now we have the names and saw the faces of those that were cut, except, let me see, the four administration cuts. It will take a long time for our district and, yes, township to forget what took place over the course of the last few weeks. The stress, worry, tears, and, yes, agony our assistants went through was disgraceful and unnecessary since we clearly have the money. The almost four hours of public comments literally spoke volumes about how much we are valued to our parents, students, and our community. It is interesting that since this happened, many other surrounding districts have reached out to let us know how terrible this is and how they support us. I guess they value their assistants and all that they do for their students and teaching staff. As a board, I'm asking you once again to do the right thing. I like to pride myself on the fact that when I served on this school board and sat on that dais, I was never a rubber stamp. I knew that at times, it was not always easy to vote in ways that did not agree with administration or other board members, but it was always the right thing to do. And I was guided by what I believed was in the best interest of our students, staff, and community. Please make your one vote matter, please, because it matters to us and we will remember.
Rob Scardino, WTEA Executive Vice President. Together with pride, we are township. These are some of the phrases and banners around campus that embody the spirit of the staff and the students of this district. As a staff, we are all invested in the success of our students and the betterment of our community. Today, I'm dressed in jeans as we had a dress-down day for Dreams Come True, where staff donates to help families in need in our community. Our priorities are the students and the community members we serve. In a previous conversation, someone said, show me your budget and I'll tell you your priorities. I found the statement to be enlightening and incredibly truthful. Our priority as staff is the education success of our students. We celebrate those successes and lend a helping hand when we find them struggling. As a staff, we are about people. Township used to be about people. We used to maintain a family atmosphere within the district. However, while looking at this budget and the cuts that were made, we're no longer about people or family, but about things. Improvements to the football field will not educate our students. A new weight room will not teach, console, or celebrate our students. New Chromebooks will not educate our students as they are mere tools. Why has our priority shifted from people to things? We were told early in budget talks, the programs would not be affected by these cuts. Yet, we've lost a band teacher at the elementary schools, have a traveling orchestra teacher at the middle level, all while starting a visual and performing arts academy. With these program cuts, how will our students be motivated to join the music program to eventually join the academy? How will students get the necessary lesson time in orchestra with a traveling teacher? With these cuts, we are setting this academy up for failure, not the jam it could truly We find ourselves moving to a new technology platform to save the district money, yet we cut computers as a class at the elementary level. This places the burden on the classroom teacher to not only carry on their already rigorous curriculum, but to now teach a new technology within their already packed day. As we take away the experts in technology, we are asking the classroom teacher to instantly become technology experts and integrate it within their regular curriculum. Something is bound to suffer within this model. World Language in our schools has always been a strength and a point of pride as we have many offerings for our students that many other districts do not have. Yet, we find ourselves cutting sixth grade world language, which will ultimately have a negative effect in the years to follow. But hey, we have a new weight room. We are cutting librarians at the middle school level. How will our children access information successfully in our instructional media centers? We are eliminating lunch assistants and extending lunch at the middle school level. How will that contribute to the safety and well-being of our students? We've claimed to cut four administrative positions, yet created three pseudo-administrative positions at the elementary level and disguise them as WTEA members. These deans of students could be held off until those positions that directly impact the education of our students are-- the education of our students are restored. As educators and staff members, our business is people. We are the ones who provide the tools needed for the success of our students, not things. Our priority should be for the, for, to the well-rounded, fully-supported education for all students, and that education comes from the dedicated teachers and assistants of our district, not from things. So I ask you, what is your priority for our district? Is it the people that make it function on a daily basis, or is it the shiny new things that cannot educate our students?
April Ranzetti.
Rob, let me respond just briefly to a few things. So I don't believe in shiny new things over people, just for clarity. Listen, guys, it's just rude. It's rude. So when we look at our one-to-one initiative every year, and guys, if you make a claim, I have to be able to at least respond to something that I need to be able to say. We have, we have used the surfaces, we've had technology built one-to-one. So the Chromebooks are actually cheaper and are saving us money. I'll be happy to include that in the conversation that we have with the NJEA as well, but that savings alone is saving us money year after year. It'll be millions in savings there. But I don't believe in putting things over people. Pam, you want, you want to take a sec and just talk about, like, the program cuts? You want to talk about? Please? Yeah, just very briefly, and just talk about what the process will be for us?
Essentially, as we look at the budget and the choices that we have, which are very limited, the constraints are there, we wanted to, A, have as much of our programming remain intact. Programming works through the standards. The Department of Education gives us the standards that are mandated to be taught. It doesn't mandate how we implement them. So we look at where are ways that we can save as many people and as many programs and still deliver high quality in Washington Township. It is so important that our schools remain high-functioning, having a balanced budget and having our programming, because that makes your town successful. That's really, really important. So when we look at any of these areas, we look at how can we save as many jobs as possible, look at all certifications across the board, look at programming and how standards can be delivered in ways that still keep us functioning and still keep high-quality offerings for our students.
Thanks, Pam. Thank you.
April Ranzetti, High School Vice President. I have, like, three pages, and I don't even know where to begin with all the notes that I added because of the behavior that I witnessed up here tonight. I've never been embarrassed to work for this school district, never, never. The last meeting I thought did it in, tonight? Checking your watch? What? Unacceptable, Scott, unacceptable. Not, unacceptable, unacceptable, unacceptable. You, I could do it, too. Listen, my theory in life is that I always respected authority, I didn't fear it. The respect that I lost for the people that employ us, I don't know how any of you-- you and I met at the beginning of negotiations and you were so pro-teacher, and for you to exhibit the behaviors that you're exhibiting tonight, appalling. If that would happen in my classroom, they'd be out. They'd be out. Unbelievable, unbelievable. I'm going to get back to what I came here to say. If anybody that was cut feels so inclined, so we could do a name to a face of the people they're cutting, please stand if you're here.
Joanne Natale.
I'm not finished, Ralph.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry.
We're here again tonight begging for your mercy. My theme tonight is on educational priority, fairness, and appropriateness, which clearly does not exist. What do I mean by educational priority? We are baffled that we have just learned in the last few days, as if things weren't bad enough, there is a piloted system that when teachers are absent, those students are going to be placed in this 1112 auditorium to work on their laptops, on their laps, that's conducive, to be looked over by a substitute. You have any idea what the average age is for our substitutes at the high school? Anybody? No? 62, retired, 65, some with some, you know, health conditions? Let me do the math. My friends helped me, because I'm not a great math person, so I wanted to make sure I got it right. Let's say 10 teachers are out. On an average, at the high school, we might have 20. Inevitably, the class sizes are going to go up because of your cuts. Let's say there's 30 kids in a class. That's 300 kids in this room, expected to complete work. Do you think that's even a little bit possible and fair to all learners, especially learners with special needs? Or are we just forgetting that population? That is not educationally appropriate or responsible. It's not. And let's not forget about all the events that are scheduled in here. What's going to happen to all of that? Where's the overlap? Not to mention the additional custodial needs. We keep hearing about capital improvements, making things pretty. I'm all for making things pretty. I'm all about safety, though, too. And that doesn't seem to be a theme at all for this board. By the way, I was one of the 10 teachers in the girl gang fight at the beginning of the year. So I'm telling you, safety's an issue here. But we're good. This is going to be a mess, and just one more thing we are not being proactive about, but certainly will need to be reactive to correct. It's the township way. If only you would start listening to the teachers, the support staff, the hall monitors, and anybody else who's actually in the buildings, living the everyday craziness, we'd be all right, but we don't. But I guess we are not educated enough or have enough doctorate degrees to know what we're talking about. Lord knows, we don't have the six-figure salaries that weren't touched. It's yet another decision being made by people who haven't been in the classroom in years to think that they still know what's best. You have a job to do, we understand that, we do. What we think is best is to educate the students and keep them safe, not a priority here. Are any of you aware of exactly how many people are in the high school and what it's going to look like with all these cuts? No, you don't. I'm assuming this must be another area where you're trying to save and cut money by getting rid of the subservice. If we're as broke as you're claiming, but clearly NJEA, our friends, said we are not, I don't understand why not every single department across this entire district was touched. I think, Dr. Hibbs, you would have gained a hell of a lot more respect if every single solitary department was touched, and it wasn't. It wasn't. You took one department. How many administrators do we have? There was four. I mean, we could do that math, too. It is truly disheartening and unacceptable that English teachers are being cut due to budget constraints. The role of English teachers is irreplaceable in shaping the minds and the futures of students. These educators are not mere individuals, just giving out information. They're the ones who instill critical thinking, communication skills, and a lifelong love for literature and language. Cutting English teachers is not just about losing jobs, it's about depriving our students of quality education. English classes are where students learn to express themselves effectively, think critically about the world around them, and develop empathy through literature. Yet, this department was cut. Education is the foundation of our society's progress, and compromising the quality of English education sends a dangerous message about our priorities. We cannot afford to undermine the importance of English teachers in shaping the next generation of leaders, thinkers, and innovators. Yet, this department was cut. I urge each one of you to reconsider the cuts targeting the teachers specifically from the English department, in addition to the critical role English teachers play in students' overall education development. English is a key subject for state testing and assessments. All of a sudden, we don't care about those? These standardized tests not only evaluate students' understanding of English language arts, but also impact school funding, teacher evaluations, and overall school performance ratings. By cutting English teachers, we not only jeopardize students' ability to excel in English classes, but also put their performance on these standardized tests at risk. Without skilled and dedicated English teachers who can effectively prepare students for these assessments, we are essentially setting students up for failure. Investing in education, particularly in subjects like English, is an investment in our future. Yet, this department was cut. Furthermore, these standardized tests often influence educational policies, curricula, and resources allocated to schools. If students are not adequately prepared in English language arts due to the absence of qualified and experienced teachers, it could have far-reaching consequences beyond individual student performance. Schools may face penalties or funding cuts based on their overall test scores. Yet, this department was cut. English is not just a subject on a standardized test, it's a fundamental skill that students need to succeed in higher education, careers, and life in general. Cutting English teachers not only undermines the quality of education, but also has a ripple effect that can harm students, schools, and the community. Yet, this department was cut. It is imperative that we prioritize the retention and the support of English teachers to ensure that students receive the education and preparation they need to thrive academically and beyond. Our students' successes should not be compromised due to short-sighted budgetary decisions. That's to value the importance of quality English education. Yet, this department was cut. Two of the English teachers cut at the high school specifically have over 18 years' experience each. One is dual-certified in English and would be a perfect candidate for your academy, and the other has his master's. Yet, they were both cut. You didn't make cuts across the areas, across every area in the district, no matter how much you say you did not. Additionally, I know this procedure of the no-back-and-forth and the no-response has been in effect. I want to thank you for actually responding tonight, because that was a big complaint that people were getting, so that paragraph, I guess I can delete. However, some of the things that you said, Dr. Hibbs, is, I'm not answering that right now, I'm not doing that right now. Can you imagine if my supervisor, administrator, a parent, or a student needed to speak to me about anything from grades, discipline issues, to my teaching responsibilities, and I simply responded in a meeting, on a phone call, or through an email, "Yeah, I'm not going to talk about that"? How do you think that would go over? It wouldn't. Can you imagine? Ms. Ranzetti, can I get a redo or a retake? Nah, we're not going to talk about that. Ms. Ranzetti, I'd like to talk to you about why you wrote my child up-- yeah, I'm not talking about that. You're the superintendent. Please set a better example and do a try and respond to the many questions and the comments. Finally, to the board members-- Ari, this isn't for you, this is for your counterpart from the last meeting-- we would appreciate a few things when we come to these meetings and speak to you. Eye contact, not whispering to each other when someone's at the podium speaking, giggling when someone is speaking, are you making fun of the speakers of their topic? I would never allow my students to mock others in any way when their classmates are speaking. We would like you to act the same.
Okay, couple things. I'm going to turn it over to both Sean and Pam to talk about this for a second. So first off, safety is always a theme here. We've discussed safety a tremendous amount this year, I don't want you to think that we haven't. Our goal is always to educate our kids and keep them safe. We are absolutely not cutting our substitute service. ELA is very important. One of the things that we looked at this year, to be very honest with you, and some of you may not know this, we had some tiered support classes that had two gen ed teachers in a classroom, and those class sizes were actually lower for our gen ed kids than were in some of our special education rooms. That's, that's actually not, it's not okay to do that. We're not, we're not really allowed to do that. It's, our special ed kids were getting less support than our gen ed kids. So we did have to make some hard decisions across the board for, for all of our staff. And Sean and Pam, can you talk for a sec about, you know, what this might look like? Wait, before you go, I'm so sorry. You know, April, I'd love for you to talk after about when I said I'm not going to talk about that, because I, in my brain, and last, last, last meeting was, was very hard. But I'm pretty, I try to answer what I can, and if I don't, it's because it's personnel-related, which we're not allowed to do. So there are certain things, when people speak opinions, that I'm not going to respond back to, but if it's personnel, no one should ever respond, and Ari will say that we shouldn't ever respond. So if, I'd love to know what that specifically was, April. I'd love for you to come and tell me, and if it was something that I, that I was callous towards, I'll own that.
Pay-to-play.
About speaking about it?
No response.
So I'll have to go back and look. Pay-to-play was discussed, was discussed with the board, and I think I said last week, and it was a very long meeting, I think I said that it was decided not to utilize pay-to-play. So from, from the board, that was the conversation. So, you know, that was, it was, it was, it was decided that for pay-to-play, we would not proceed with that in the budget. So there's the response to that. Pam and Sean?
I can speak to the co-talk classrooms and the English teachers. As I mentioned before, we looked at certifications. It would be amazing to have co-talk classrooms in every single department, every department. English, social studies, math, they're all valuable, but it's just not financially feasible. It's not fair to our taxpayers, it doesn't balance a budget, and it's providing intervention, which is amazing, but we can also provide intervention in other ways. So that's the, the task of every district, is to be able to provide tiered support systems and intervention for all of our students, and certainly our identified students. And that's what we will do next school year. We have interventionists, we have teachers who can intervene, we have the support of our supervisors of instruction, our administrators, our staff across the board to support our learners who are striving. So that will absolutely happen. As far as substitutes?
Yeah, as Dr. Hibbs alluded to, we will definitely have substitute staff at the high school continuing into next year. What we did find in examining the budget, there are hundreds of thousands of dollars annually put into substitute staffing at the high school alone, so we're trying to find creative ways to reduce that cost while still supervising students in a safe manner.
I guess move on.
Hi, my name is Joanne Tole. I am your Orchard Valley Middle School German teacher. Nice to meet you. Thank you for employing me. I've really enjoyed being the German teacher here for these past three years. I am here because of my individual fate. I love teaching German, I've learned so much during my time here, and I feel like I'm a great asset to the program. I don't want to talk too much about myself, though. I really want to pitch to you the disservice that would be done if we cut world languages in our school system. I'm not the one to speak to the program as much as other people who've been here for decades, who have taken the time and built a really incredible program here in Washington Township. I've been able to be integrated into it and be a part of it. I think what the problem is, is that we think that world languages is all about, well, are they going to become fluent in the language? And what I want to appeal to you about is that it's not just about becoming fluent in a language, it's about-- one thing is the opening of the mind. It's, it's scientifically proven that the neurons in the mind are opened more when you learn a foreign language. Boy, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not bringing this out very well. So you're quite literally becoming more open-minded when you learn a foreign language, but it's also about tolerance. I lived in Germany for roughly 30 years. I raised my children there, I know the culture very well. The things that go on within a world language classroom, it's not just about the academic achievement-- achievement of learning the language. I would say to you that even more importantly, it's about developing a global view, it's about developing tolerance for people who are different than ourselves, for understanding that there's a much bigger world and we have a very narrow view. So you might think, what are we really losing when we're cutting down our foreign language program? Well, I would argue that you're learning, you're losing a lot more than you think you are, and if you're judging it only based on whether or not people become fluent, that's the wrong, that's the wrong perspective to take on it. Our, our, our character as human beings is built on so much more than that, and the academic achievement and the information that we're able to process and all of those good things are very, very important, but we also need to have tolerance, we need to be able to understand peoples who have other people, other cultures, other worldviews, and this program was built up on so much sweat and labor that I've benefited from and I'm very grateful for. I'd love to be able to stay, I'd love it to, to be able to continue to work here, it's been wonderful, but I would plead with you to please, when you're making your decisions about world languages in the future, take a second look at it, it's more important than you think.
My name is Mark Lopez, and I am a middle school Spanish teacher at Orchard Valley. I come before you all today to express my sincerest concerns about the future that our school district seems to be creating for its children. My concerns are that being an American who is a believer in government transparency to its constituency, and that of an educator who is a believer in advocacy for children. At the April 30th Board of Education budget meeting, the presentation included that 36 teachers and 55 support staff would be cut without any mention of how the children's programs would be negatively impacted. Our district's administration has not yet shared with the teachers how the children's programs will be negatively impacted, but amongst us staff members, we have been able to piece together that the children's programs will be negatively impacted in the following areas: elementary counseling, elementary music, elementary computers, elementary French, elementary German, middle school library, 6th grade French, 6th grade German, 6th grade Spanish. But this is all that we can figure out thus far amongst ourselves. The staff is also very concerned about the possibility of increased class sizes, which is not conducive to teaching and learning. There is a Spanish saying that says, "Dime con quién andas y te diré quién eres," which translates as, "Tell me with whom you walk, and I will tell you with who you are." I walk with the people that are behind me, the people who support kids. Will you join us? Please strongly consider restoring these children's programs and our confidence in the Board of Education. Thank you.
My name is Liz Aldrich, and I am the orchestra director at Orchard Valley Middle School. In 2016, I was successfully self-employed, and one of the only reasons I even considered switching to public education was because there was an opening to teach orchestra in Washington Township. Our district has always had an excellent reputation for music. In fact, we have been honored with the Best Communities for Music Education designation by the NAMM Foundation multiple times. Students from Washington Township have been accepted into All-State Orchestra, All-Eastern Orchestra, All-National Orchestra, one of them even placed first chair. Township alumni have gone on to study at the Curtis Institute of Music, the Juilliard School, Boston Conservatory, Manhattan School of Music, Yale, and NYU. They have given recitals at Carnegie Hall, played with the Metropolitan Opera Orchestra, performed in Broadway pits, and for movie soundtracks. One has recently written and debuted a musical, and several have won Grammys. The one thing that all of these individuals have in common is that their musical upbringing began in Washington Township public schools. Many teachers, myself included, have not been given any information about our teaching assignments for next year. We've been left to deduce and speculate about the future of our programs. While we have been assured that no programs have been cut, staffing is a significant worry. It is impossible to consider the 36 teaching positions being eliminated, plus resignations and retirements in the music department, without fearing that these positions are going to go unfilled. I worry that if the remaining music teachers are asked to cover multiple buildings, we will become spread too thin in an already tremendously understaffed district. It will be nearly impossible to continue to deliver the high-caliber experiences that our students are accustomed to and that they deserve. For example, in the last two years, our string students hosted world-renowned composer Soon He Newbold and Grammy-winning bassist Renan Meyer, a Washington Township alum. The elementary, middle, and high school string staff spent countless hours planning the logistics of both events. Opportunities like these will be unfeasible without enough string staff. But tonight, my colleague mentioned that there will be a traveling orchestra teacher at the middle level. Is that me? Why did I have to hear about this in a room full of hundreds of people? I guess I will continue to speculate. The uncertainty fills me with dread. Understand that I am speaking tonight proactively, because I am extremely concerned about what could happen to the 4th through 12th grade instrumental music program if we are not careful. I truly hope that my speaking this evening turns out to be unnecessary, and that all vacancies will be filled. We are on the cusp of so many great things. We are finally getting past the damage that online learning did to the instrumental music programs, and we're seeing a return of pre-pandemic student involvement numbers. Washington Township High School is set to launch the Visual and Performing Arts Academy this fall, which will be another enormous point of pride for our school community if we continue to build the foundation for it. Dr. Hibbs and members of the school board, I implore you to find a way, because there's always a way, to preserve the joy that playing an instrument gives students, and ensure that Washington Township upholds its exemplary music program. Please fill all vacancies. Thank you for your time.
Pam, you want to take a sec and talk about just, part of, it's, it's not, it's, it's actually, would be unusual for us to put out all the details of what next year looks like right now. It is, that would not happen in any school district that I've ever been a part of or anyone that I know. You don't have to like that answer, but that's, that's the honest truth. Pam, you want to take a second, just talk, guys?
Sure.
Guys? Come on.
Please.
Sure. I would just start with, it saddens me that a rumor would be listened to before you're able to get a communication. I know that our supervisors of instruction have been working with their departments and have been sharing that they are planning, and we are planning, and there's lots and lots of steps to make sure that when there's a communication, that that communication doesn't change and that it's accurate, because it is a highly emotional time, and we realize that implementation may look different next year, but our programs are intact. And to do that takes a tremendous amount of planning behind the scenes so that a communication can be accurate. And I know that departments and team members that reach out and say, "What is going to happen for next year?", receive the answer of what can be shared at the time that is known to be accurate and unchanging. So when a communication comes out from me, or your department supervisor, a principal, any member of our district, it's going to be accurate so that you know where you're going to be planning for, for next year. So that is coming, and I just appreciate the opportunity to have questions, I have my email, I have conversations if I walk through the hallway and see you, and I know I've visited the classroom. I'm proud of our programs, I'm proud of our Visual and Performing Arts Academy that's, that's emerging next school year, and we're doing everything we can to preserve those programs and put people where their passions are. I know from just being able to see those performances, some of our teachers are highly skilled and passionate in orchestra, others prefer band, others prefer music across the board, and being able to place you where you're most passionate and skilled is going to help everybody continue to learn and grow. So that is our goal, and that's when that communication will come out.
Donna Pacelli?
My name's Donna Pacelli. I'm one of the health assistants at the high school on the 9:10 side. I work five and three-quarter hours a day, and on the 11:12 side, there's two assistants who work three and a half hours each day. Both myself and one of the assistants have been reassigned. The 11:12 PM assistant has been terminated or cut. Our nurse's office needs coverage. If there's only one health student, health assistant there for three and a half hours a day, our nurses are going to be lost. We are busy. Our nurses cannot man offices alone. It's a dangerous proposition. Cumulatively, between the AM health assistant and the 11:12 and myself, we have 15 hour, 15 hours, years of experience. And now, they want to replace us with people who have zero experience. These are people who have been, excuse me, sorry, who have been hallway monitors. They don't have the experience to help run these offices. So, I've been reassigned, and I'm going to be a lunch playground assistant at Birch's. My background and education includes that I have an associate's degree, I've been a patient care technician at Virtual Hospital, I'm a certified medical assistant, and I've had experience as an executive secretary at a pharmaceutical firm. The health assistance jobs are very fast-paced, detail-oriented, and very diverse, and you must be able to multitask, because your head's on a swivel, there's so many kids who've come into these offices. Now, I want to know how two totally inexperienced individuals can fill the shoes of experienced, qualified health assistants. Health assistants are specialized staff who, with the nurses, help run the nurses' offices smoothly. We care for our students, we put them first, and we're concerned and help them with illnesses, injuries, mental health issues, just to name a few. The nurses' health assistants, the nurse and the health assistants are a team. We work efficiently and in, and in an organized manner. Together, we keep students healthy, comforted, and in school. All nurses' offices in the district must have experienced health assistants to cover the hours we're open. This is essential for all of our students. Thank you.
Kelly Lind?
Hi, Donna, I, I, my, you know, my, my wife is a nurse, so I absolutely recognize how important nurses are and anyone that works in the medical profession. The only reason why the, the bumping occurred is strictly because of the language we had to adhere to in the contract. There was no outward conversation trying to replace anyone that had experience anywhere. We, we had to by the contract follow the bumping rights, so I want to make sure I answered your question.
Hello, my name is Kelly Lind. I'm a travel art teacher at OVMS in Chestnut Ridge Middle School, who is unfortunately one of the 36 teachers facing the non-renewal of our contracts. Honestly, it was a punch in the gut. It is generally disheartening as art class is an outlet and a highlight of many students' days. Yesterday, students discussed how much they love and look forward to art class daily. One of the students said, "It is the material that I teach and how I teach it. I have enjoyed working with diverse students in this district for the past two years. My observations have shown that I'm an asset to this district," and I quote from one of my administrators, "Ms. Lind is a highly valued member of OVMS. I've been forced to pay thousands of dollars out of my pocket for my classroom to keep it afloat for the students. My coworkers and I realize our budget is slightly over $4 per student per year. I have used what I have to create impactful projects. I've collaborated with ELL teacher last year to do a word art portrait. The other art teacher at OVMS and Chestnut Ridge Middle School, we did a Paint with Light photography lesson, among other things, and I taught with Mr. Libby to make apple mummies. Last semester, I worked with the 7th and 8th grade students for my master's thesis to make a recipe book and a culture quilt. Students researched their ancestry and cultural background, resulting in a recipe book and a culture quilt. I gained a grant for Chestnut Ridge students to research their backgrounds on AncestryClassroom.com. Witnessing the students' joy during the cultural feast we organized for this project was heartwarming. The students expressed that this project was their best project and favorite project in art class. The quilt was showcased at the district art night, receiving positive feedback from parents of students and parents of students I don't even have. Two students came up to me that night that I had last year to tell me I was the reason they were taking art classes in high school. I earned my master's two weekends ago with a 3.96 GPA the same week, the same week I learned I was losing my job. It dampened my ability to celebrate my achievement. Despite the challenges of limited resources, especially for the behavioral program I teach, I've always found teaching these students to be the highlight of my day. I teach these students twice a week without a lunch period. These students' work has continued to bring light to my life. The students have become my children the minute they walk through my door, as I witness their development in skills and appreciate the knowledge I impart in them. The impact of these experiences on the students has been enriching. My colleagues are not just my coworkers, they've become my family. And in October, I was told I was going to be able to stay at one school next year, and now I'm facing losing my job. Please reassess the situation as the students will be adversely affected by the overcrowding class sizes, which will happen if you cut my position. The question I'm going to leave with you tonight is, why am I losing my job when all the evidence points to this is not what's best for the students, and I have really good observation reports? And why are we negatively affecting the students' ability to learn? Thank you.
Did I pronounce that right?
My name is Adrienne Choma. I've been an ELA teacher in the district for 18 years, and I am the WTEA's Middle School Vice President. I'm asking I'm asking the board for transparency. Parents and teachers deserve to know how the programs will be affected by the positions that were cut. The middle schools are losing their librarians. The secondary-level ELA department is down eight positions, including an ELA interventionist who worked with our most struggling learners. In 2015, we cut ELA daily instruction time from the middle schools from 84 minutes each day down to 55 minutes. And then again, it was cut a few years ago to 49 minutes of ELA instruction every day. Eighty-four minutes to 49 minutes. With all of these staff cuts and transfers, I am assuming that tiered support and basic skill services are being decimated. I'm assuming that class sizes will continue to grow. I am assuming that there will be presentations to persuade the board members to vote for grade inflation to replace quality education. We will tweak the grading scale and curve zeros up to 50%. And when the standardized test scores show the discrepancy between district-issued grades and standardized test scores, I'm sure this will be explained away with claims that test scores are not valid and they do not represent real learning, as if turning every zero into 50% represents real learning. There's nothing more equitable than holding all students to high standards. Grades should reflect learning. If we prioritize grades, students will do what it takes to learn, and that is the end goal. If we inflate grades, we disincentivize learning. If we remove the interventions and support that help students learn, we are setting them up for failure no matter what number we put in the gradebook. A kid who has 30 missing assignments is a kid who did not do the learning, and we have a responsibility to intervene, not just turn all those zeros into 50%. Teachers should have discretion to have conversation with students, time to work one-on-one with students, and the support to modify assignments as necessary. This is what our tiered support classes offer students right now. But teachers should also have the support needed to uphold high expectations so students learn what they're supposed to learn. A grade represents effort, work, and the knowledge that results from that effort and work. Many students need support in addition to what is provided in a regular, one-teacher classroom to acquire that knowledge. How will these cuts affect these students? How will interventions and tiered support be impacted? Are we still offering extra support to struggling students? If my assumptions are wrong, please correct them. I'm still waiting to see how these cuts will impact my teaching and my students, and apparently I might not find out until September. I'm still waiting to see how tiered support and BSI will look different, or if it will exist at all, because none of this information is being shared with the teachers. Teachers are not involved in any of these decisions. I hope I do not see grade inflation replace scaffolded instruction, but I am still in the dark. Thank you.
Thanks, Adrienne. I think Dr. Nathan hit a lot of that in that she will be communicating to the staff and to the community, for sure. We do not believe in grade inflation, but we are doing some work through the [laughter] Wow. We are doing work through the grading committee. So to answer most of your questions, stay tuned, and Dr. Nathan will communicate. It's actually quite normal for school districts to take time to plan. Most school districts will actually do a lot of this planning in the late spring into the summer, and then will communicate out to staff. It is, it would be completely abnormal, again, this is the last time I'll say this, for us to have that plan done right now, as we need time to plan. And teachers will be involved in that work as well.
Kelly Evans?
Mrs. Choma, thank you so much, because everything she said, I'll save myself some time. My name is Kelly Evans. This is my 18th year as a teacher in this district. I spent 10 years as a reading teacher and basic skills teacher. When we merged reading and English, and we went from those 84 minutes a week down to, well, a bunch less, let me see, down to 55 minutes a day, pardon me, I became a supplemental ELA teacher. Didn't have a description, didn't have a curriculum. I figured it out. I found out that I loved it. I did that for three years, 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. Then I moved back into English. Been there for five years. I teach BSI, and I have always done one section of BSI. And this year, I teach Elevate. I have nine kids. Every single one of them have grown their Lexile assessment. And I don't know if you know what a Lexile is? It's your reading level. Some of my kids came in with a Lexile of 200, first grade. When those kids walk in my classroom, I have a plan, but I can adapt it. Four kids are out, we're not moving on. Last week, they got interested in some Beable article about butterflies. We have now Googled, YouTubed, bees, wasps, hornets. Today, they saw a video, a butterfly did this, and a kid goes, "Oh, they're beating their wings so the blood can flow through the veins." My kids are connecting. They are pulling in social studies and science. They are talking about, and I'm so blessed that I teach these kids in English also, they're pulling in things from those classes. I want to respect my principle. I'm not going to discuss my assignment next year. I worry that Elevate, I can't get an answer. She certainly couldn't provide me with one. Nobody can. If Elevate doesn't exist, these kids, and I charted it, you're all welcome to come see it. I have a spreadsheet. My friends know I'm nuts with this stuff. Every single month, I assess their Lexile in the Beable program, which is a blessing and this district should hold on to. You should fight tooth and nail to hold on to Beable. The difference it is making in these kids' lives is insane. We need to hold on to this program. And if I can't drive this program forward, which I would love to do, somebody else has to. I track them in Beable, I track them in iXcel. The growth is tremendous. The correlation between the amount of activities completed and the higher-level Lexile growth is so evident. I have one kid move schools. I already said, I don't think he should be in Beable next year. He's ready to go. Got another kid who's now reading on like the 11th grade level, 10th grade level? He's doing phenomenally. We need these programs. And Dr. Hibbs, you had talked about the tiered support classrooms having two teachers and not many kids, 24, 25 kids. 10, 11 of those kids are tiered support. These are kids that need the most support, and we have less ELA time, and we have more writing. I mean, I don't know if any of you, you're all welcome to come, jump in my GoFormative and grade some essays for me, even short response. We don't do just multiple choice, we do short response. So for every kid that does one activity, there's like five or six things we have to read, paragraphs. I'm here to advocate for no ELA cuts, because how do I get a class size of 24 even bigger? My darlings, my sweet children, who need the most intervention, cannot lose their Elevate, their Beable. The iXcel program, when taught correctly, is a blessing. And any teacher that's teaching iXcel and hates it, come see me. I will give you a one-on-one, because my kids love it. It's individualized instruction. You can do group jams, you can break them out. These are programs we need. Because in a department that doesn't have a textbook and hasn't had a textbook-aligned curriculum since I was a reading teacher, there's, everything I do, I have to create. So when I find a program I love, like Beable or iXcel, I'm holding on to it. We need these programs in the English department. We need some program that is aligned to a curriculum so we have a launching point, because everything we do, we create from scratch. How can you be a master when you're reinventing the wheel? And I'm 18 years at this. I'm closer to retirement than I am to like starting. And I will tell you guys, you can support us. I have a colleague in the audience I work EMS with. This job is more stressful than that job. And if you think about what an EMT on the street sees, yeah, this job carries more with me than that job, and that job carries. I love my job. I want to help my kids. Please empower me to do the best thing I can. Give me a program. Keep the programs that are super important. Come to my Elevate class, period one. It's fun, but listen, they're casual. They're like siblings, they travel all day together. You just gotta, gotta understand that if you come see us. For my kids' sake, please give them the tiered support that they need through the tiered support classroom next year. Please give them the Elevates. Please give them the Beables, the iXels. And listen, I'm super outspoken, if you couldn't tell, so you're all welcome to reach out to me. I'll tell you how I feel. I will fight for my kids. I'm not going to say, uh, you know, everybody, they love the kids, we all do, yes. But like, what's best for them? And when somebody's hurting my children, that's when I get really loud and I fear for what is going to happen to these kids. And one more thing, and I'm going to be super quick. We want to celebrate the process of learning, right? The majority of their grades should come from the learning process, the minority should come from the demonstration of mastery. We cannot expect kids that haven't developed a work ethic yet to do a majority of the work for 30% of the credit. So if we're moving towards that grading, you got to understand, we motivate kids through like incentives, regular. What if I said to a kid, "You can pass this class if you work and you try hard. You can then demonstrate mastery," you know what I mean, on the majors? But I wrote that in the grading coalition survey, I wrote paragraphs, and I heard from no one. I know what motivates 12s and 13s. I know what motivates these kids. And doing all the work for a little bit of the credit isn't the way to go. They haven't developed their work ethic yet, guys. They're not adults. And we got to treat them like their age. I still go to my Yard Sticks book about developmentally appropriate tasks for kids. Thank you so much. Elevate, tiered support, BSI.
Thank you. Alicia?
Dr. Nathan, you want to respond?
Can you hear me? Okay.
Gotcha.
So Kelly, I appreciate you sharing. I think we share a common vision for blended learning classroom environments. All this school year, we've been running a vetting committee so that we can look at all of the tools, because again, across all of our departments, teachers have resources that they believe help them elevate our students. Being able to vet and work with the teams of teachers throughout this entire school year allows us to make those important choices and trade-offs, because there are some programs that can duplicate each other. So we want to make sure that we're making the best decisions and providing those tools. So we're in agreement. A grading coalition has also been taking place all this school year, so that conversation around the purpose of grades and alignment for the district around consistent processes has been happening as well. So all of that will be part of communications that come out before the end of this school year. So again, thank you for sharing. I believe we believe in the same things, so I appreciate it.
Lisa Campani?
My name is Alyssa Campanini, and I am a music educator and parent within the district. I have taught 6th through 8th grade chorus at Orchard Valley Middle School for the past 11 years. I hold a master's degree in music education, and I'm currently a doctoral candidate in the DMA program through Boston University. I have come forward, as so many others, to speak on several issues clearly forthcoming should this board stick with the proposed budget and the staffing cuts district-wide. I would first like to address the lack of information our educators have been given in regards to the teaching assignments for the 2024-2025 school year. For the teachers who will be reassigned to different buildings, subjects, and grade levels, do we really believe that 16 school days is enough time to prepare? What about the time needed to pack up if necessary? Or are you assuming, like with everything else, we'll just do that over the unpaid summer In the same regard, will the district be providing professional development to assist its educators in preparing for new roles? Or did you not budget for that? While yes, some of us may hold K-12 certifications, this does not imply that we won't need support to learn new roles and curriculum, or in the case of our ELA department, creating curriculum. I am just trying to understand the thought process going into next school year. As a district, you can barely staff your buildings. As it is, you have staff covering for colleagues because there aren't enough substitutes. How then, with even less staff, will you be able to function day-to-day and still claim programming won't be affected? With less staff, I can only deduce that class sizes will rise. The district already struggles with compliance when it comes to our students with IEPs and 504s and the availability of our 1:1 eights. How will larger class sizes and less staff address that issue? What you are insisting upon is spreading staff so thin that inevitably some will break. I can only imagine that you are playing a game of survival of the fittest, and when truly talented and passionate educators cannot handle the undue stress, you'll be able to hire others at the lower step on the salary guide. Is that the aim? Is that your solution to the so-called budgetary deficits? You cannot claim programming will not be affected when the very teachers who provide the programming cannot manage to keep up with traveling between buildings, learning to teach new subjects, grade levels, and curriculum. How can you claim to be for the students when you are cutting the very people directly in contact with them daily? The same teachers and support staff who consistently go above and beyond for the students' successes and well-being. You cannot be against us and for the students. It's a fundamental impossibility. I urge you, we urge you, to overturn this proposed solution to the budgetary deficits, because this current proposal isn't a solution. It is the downfall of our district. Thank you.
Certainly, we will definitely have professional development. We will definitely support. Listen, we, there have been zero discussions about anyone leaving and hiring lower down the guide. And if you go back and look at some recommendations that have made, I have made recommendations to bring people in, hire on the guide. So there is absolutely no truth to that whatsoever. It's just the truth. And secondly, or lastly, we may disagree on some things. You obviously do not, you are obviously unhappy with where we are. I am unhappy with where we are. I am, no one is against you, and no one is, you know, for students. We, you know, we will sit down and we will dispel what we believe are inaccurate facts that are presented today, and we'll be happy to give them to the board and then communicate out. And as far as everything else goes for next year, again, we will, we will communicate what that looks like.
Maryang? Claire?
We can't read, she left. We can't read the last name. Okay.
Sorry about that. Patty Tukalis?
Must be popular for a cheer before I speak. All right, so, as we all know, I'm the numbers girl. So last week, I talked, so again, I'm Patty Tukalis. I've worked at the high school. This is my 24th year I've completed here. I am currently a math interventionist, not really sure what's going to happen with that next year, but that's a future talk. Anyway, so I talked last week about my concerns about safety, monitoring the students at the high school. So I wasn't planning on speaking last week, so I didn't have all my numbers intact, so I've spent the last week kind of gathering numbers to share with all of you. I'm going to go based off of enrollment, similar to what we had this year, was it approximately 2,100 students at the high school. So currently, as So currently, as part of our contract, teachers have a supervision duty as part of their day. We do things such as study halls, cafeteria duty, office duty, hall duty, class coverage. And we're having trouble, you know, keeping up with that and monitoring the students this year that our administration had to get very creative. They've even pulled in our counselors and CST for cafeteria duty in order to cover it properly. So if a kid has a crisis in the middle of lunch, it's a little tough sometimes to find a counselor. So we also have paid assistants who all cover hall duty, lab duty, cafeteria duty on a daily basis. With all of this support that we have in place, with all of the things that administration did, they're making supervisors come in and monitor lunch and do all, we are like all hands on deck in our building. We still currently have shortage of 53 areas during the day that are not covered. And that's, you know, mainly it's hall duties and things like that. But when I looked at the numbers, we, where we would be ideal is we're still short 53 class periods. Lab and hall monitors were hired a few years ago when we had a big massive staff cut that I had talked about prior. Mr. Bolendorf at the time was the principal. And he hired them because we didn't have the staff to cover the needs and safely monitor our students. If we just cut the lab monitors, I want you to understand the numbers, we're going to need an additional 56 periods of teachers in order to cover just the lavatory. And just so you're all aware, in the high school, there's only one operating lavatory in the entire upstairs, and that's only covered currently in the morning. So if your child has a class upstairs, they have to travel downstairs um, in order to use a lab, which is more time outside of the classroom. So how is this going to happen next year with all of the lab monitors, all of the hall assistants, all of the library aides, everything we need to supervise the students being cut, when we also, in addition to it, lost several teachers? To, this is just to my knowledge, what I have been informed of. We have lost two math positions. One of them was transferred to a middle school. The other position was eliminated. We lost three English teachers. One of them is due to retirement. Two people were not rehired. We have one science teacher who has resigned from the district. And from what I understand, they're not reposting that position. We lost one art teacher who lost her position. One language teacher was reduced to part-time and one counselor who resigned. They are not rehiring that position. So with losing the lab monitors, the hall monitors, the library aides, and now all of those staff, how are we going to cover and safely monitor our students? We can't currently do it now. This year, teachers were also assigned to assist in the core in the 1112 offices because of the secretarial cuts that were made last year. The offices are struggling and yet we lost another four secretary positions this year. We lost a bookkeeper, a counseling secretary, an IMC secretary, and the 1112 attendance secretary, from again, from what I've been told, will not be renewed. I also asked about increase in class sizes. So once again, I'm going to give you a sample example. I'm just going based off of numbers because we don't have all of the exact sections yet. And that's why we're waiting for assignments from our supervisors. So I'm going to go with English. And I know other people talk about English while I'm a math teacher. Every student needs to take four years of English. So that's where it makes the numbers quite simple to use. So next year, with the staff cuts, the English department, we're going to have 15 full-time English teachers plus one interventionist. And we don't know what that's going to look like for her next year. Then we're going to have one English teacher who's going to teach from, again, my understanding, one section and the rest will be in the drama department. And then we'll have one teacher who's going to teach one English section. And then he's going to be monitoring ombudsman, which that's another thing that's coming to the high school next year that we're also going to have to cover safely. So if you do the math, 15 teachers times five section gives you 75 sections of English plus the two additional sections gives us a total of 77 sections. If we take an approximation student of 2,100 students, divide that by the 77 sections, you're getting an average class size of 27 students. That's an average. Um, and that's in a tested subject area. And as an interventionist that was kind of thrown into testing, you know, this, this school year and having to test almost 1,100 students this week, it's a little disheartening to hear that an average class size is going to be about 27. So these are the real raw numbers. And then I have to say, this was not part of my speech, but I'm just kind of curious. I saw that in the budget, there was $21,000 for renovating a bathroom. Can I ask where? Was it only done at Central? Because in the 1112, I implore all board members to go down to the 1112 A-Hall bathroom because this building is well over 50 years old and those bathrooms need to be gutted. And to be honest, I didn't think the ones at Central were all that bad compared to what these students, and I'm not talking the teacher ones, the student bathrooms, um, should be done. And then, you know, $150,000 on painting. Again, Bell's bathroom is over 50 years old. You know, the Wedgewood, I think they're still the same bathrooms that I used when I was there from kindergarten through sixth grade. So just thought I'd throw those numbers out there. Anyway, so there's a lot of things going on next year. You know, you talk about you have to make these budget cuts. But again, I feel like I said this last week and I stand by my statement that I feel like out of all the options, this was not our best option because the majority of the cuts are affecting the classrooms. Class sizes of 26 in a tested area, when we're worried about test scores and improving that, is not the way to go. So I implore you to rethink that, look back at where we can do it. And again, we need all of the support staff that we have at the high school. We're not going to be able to safely function next year.
Where'd he go? So you guys have heard from a lot of staff on why they need their jobs. I am not staff. I am a parent of two, one day three in this district. And everything I've heard from staff is alarming for my kids' future here. When you were looking at the budget, I wanted to touch on one of the contracts we have for ABA services and why we can't utilize these funds for actual district employees as opposed to outsourcing. And also, often this piece of the budget is looked at and how often this piece of the budget is actually looked at instead of just renewed and paid. Over $2.5 million goes to Denovian Associates. When we could have Washington Township hired staff for BCBAs and trained RBTs getting a Washington Township paycheck. What we pay to this third-party company is almost 30% of the $7 million that we just lost. That is insane. These services, I understand, are crucial to our special ed population. I'm not saying they're not important. I am a special ed parent of one of the lowest functioning students we have. I understand how important it is. This company does consults only. They do not even provide services to our children. I have asked several times and I have gotten confirmation that they do not provide ABA therapy service hours to our kids and our consult only. We award a contract of that kind of money to a company that does not provide services is absurd. Not to mention, on a side note, that they have a track record of fraud. And pending sexual assault cases. I know single-handedly for a proven fact that it is, that that company has committed insurance fraud because my own insurance company will not allow us to work with them. Quite a few other families in this district were also pulled from them privately because of fraud. Does somebody in this district comb through our billing with them with a fine-tooth comb to know that we are actually being billed correctly? How can $2.5 million, almost 30% of our cut, be justified to a third-party company? Have there been any other companies in recent years that have bid on this job? Or do we just keep renewing this company without revisiting any other options? Why can we not, as a township, employ on-staff ABA services and hire your own RBTs and ABCBAs? Why is $2.5 million spent on consultations when we are cutting $7 million of personal staff? The ones that are actually working with the children? We can't even pay our own staff to keep the buildings running and we are paying them $112.50 an hour to consult. And the clinical associates are paid $54 an hour. Why is this necessary? What is stopping us from hiring in-house ABA services that can directly deal with our children? I can't imagine that that road would cost over $2 million. I understand that the company they come from, they are highly trained and they are mostly needed in BD classrooms. Do the rest of our special ed programs, can the rest of our special ed programs operate without them if we had in-house trained ABA staff? I strongly encourage you to look into this further and speak with your special ed staff regarding this that work with them in the buildings every day. I feel you will find that you can save $2.5 million a year and allocate it to other staff and still be able to hire and satisfy the need of ABA services in other ways. Cuts were made from the bottom. People that quite literally make sure our kids make it through the day. I am not for anybody losing their job, anyone. But it is clear that it's going to happen. But where it's happening is not only heartbreaking to the people that it's happening to, but it's terrifying as a parent to see. Especially with elementary school children that I have and a baby that will be here before I know it, these changes that are happening are going to affect my kids for years to come. When it comes from top-level jobs, and this is in no way a dig at this specific position, it is an example. Because again, I'm not for anybody losing a job. But we have a building supervisor at an elementary school. We have a principal and we also have teachers in charge. Why do we need a building supervisor? That building can run without that position. But the building and my kids' academic careers will crumble without cafeteria aides, computers as a special, assistants, aides, librarians. Not all kids play sports. Music, art and other departments are crucial to kids in their academic lives. As an MD parent, what is my kid going to do without the programs that she can take part in? I graduated grad school with a 4.0 at the top of my class. However, making my success, my life successful came from doing art. The positions that are cut, that apparently must happen, should not be those that are directly impacting the core of these kids' days. My last concern. During the last meeting, there was a line that Dr. Hibbs said referring to hiring only the most qualified staff. So now with all these cuts, I'm afraid that qualified is going to go out the window when you have to replace them. We had an issue last summer with ESS doing ESY. We all know that that's a problem. Is ESS going to replace all of these people on a whim when you need them? They are not the most qualified in these positions. We are putting them specifically, speaking of special ed, in places of assistants that may not be here that are qualified. Just as an FYI, we had a very qualified applicant for a job as a specialized assistant. Three positions, actually. She was overqualified, overeducated and had all the certifications that were, she, they were, um, recommended, she already had them. She was overlooked for a job this year. That job remained posted for months. She was never given a call back and she was not hired. I know you cannot speak about personnel, but this situation, again, is alarming. Who are you hiring if you're not hiring those qualified people? I urge you to reevaluate where the cuts are being made. I'm sorry to anyone that has been affected by this or will be affected by this. And I don't mean to come after anyone's job. But the bottom-tier jobs are essential and it's scary from a parent that they're not being recognized.
Yeah, um, hi Nicole. So I, I just want to reiterate, I, I missed the first part. I'm so sorry, but I will go back and I'll listen to it. And I'll have Mrs. Miller give you a call on anything that's pertinent. As far as programs go, we are definitely not cutting programs. And there is absolutely zero talk about having ESS replace our staff. That is not what we want. And to talk for a little bit about, about the concept of Denovi. The minute I got here, I had conversations about initially, immediately about why don't we have our own BCBAs on staff? And why don't we have the concept of RBTs? And I think Denovi has just been, has been here for a very long time. So our goal is to, well, it's been here for a time. Okay? It predated May. So we could not come in and undo that all in the moment. And I think that, I think that Denovi does provide a service to us right now. But the goal is to reevaluate that so that we can have township folks lead those positions. Because that's, that's where I, I believe we need to be. It just was not as simple as just turn off the faucet and then move because it, we're too big to do that. So we had to, we had to do it incrementally and that's, that's definitely our plan.
Rob Scardino on behalf of the nurses of the district. Dear Dr. Hibbs and the Washington Township Board of Education, we write this letter on behalf of all the health assistants whose hours have been decreased or cut and the nurses who will be affected by this change. The health, health assistant is a tremendous help to the school nurse who would otherwise work alone in an isolated office, caring for both ill and injured students and staff. In emergency situations, the health assistant is our second set of hands to grab emergency medication and our voice to call for more help. While tending to a student or staff member in a crisis, it is our health assistants who, though not medically trained, have learned so much by watching us practice. They know what we're thinking. They know what we will do next and they know what we will ask for and they know where to get it. Imagine an emergency occurring in a classroom upstairs or out on the soccer field while the nurse is tending to patients in the health office. This happens more often than you think. Who will answer the emergency phone call for help while the nurse may be helping an asthmatic breathe? Who will remain with the students in the health office while the nurse runs to an emergency? Who will grab what we need from the health office and bring it to the emergency in a timely manner? If the emergency is in the health, health office, who will hear us yelling for help? Who will answer our plea to call 911? Children are coming to our school sicker than they used to with complex medical and emotional needs. How does the nurse take time to do a thorough assessment of a sick student when she's being interrupted every three to five minutes with other students walking through the door? The health assistant is that second set of eyes, ears and hands to triage students coming in to take temperatures, to hand out Band-Aids and cough drops while we remain uninterrupted with the student who needs more acute medical attention. The health assistant is the one who interrupts us when we need to be interrupted for an incoming student who needs immediate attention. Regarding preventative care, how does a nurse screen 500, 700, 1,100 students each year to make sure they're growing and thriving? The health assistant's simple task of measuring heights and weights while the nurse screens for vision, hearing, blood pressure and scoliosis is a tremendous help and ensures that 100% of our students can be screened each school year. For many students, this is the only healthcare they will get. How does the nurse take time to educate parents and students or participate in parent meetings, 504 and IEP meetings? In a hospital or doctor's office, we are surrounded by fellow nurses and physicians who can help us in an emergency. We understand that we are not in an acute care setting. However, school nursing is not just boo-boos and Band-Aids. As school nurses, we are responsible for the health and safety of 500, 700, 1,100 students plus hundreds of faculty and staff members by ourselves. The students and staff that we care for have uncontrolled diabetes, uncontrolled asthma, uncontrolled seizure disorders, clotting disorders, potential for fatal cardiac dysrhythmias, implemented defibrillators, fainting spells, severe anxiety manifesting and physical symptoms, self-harming behaviors with or without suicidal ideation, are under the influence of alcohol or drugs and many more medical concerns. We are not asking for a second medical professional. We simply need someone present who knows what to do and to call for help when there's an emergency. A nursing license is not easy to obtain and takes much work. A nursing license is not easy to obtain and takes much work and continuing education to maintain. We're not certain how many nurses are willing to take the risk of their nursing license to work under such unsafe conditions. Please consider saving the hours of our health assistants. Isn't the safety of our students worth a small amount of money the district will save by cutting their hours? With our sincerest concern, the Washington Township Public School District Nurses. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nancy Meyer. I am from Marlton, New Jersey. I've been an educator for 33 years. I am a current LAT chair and a grievance chair in my district. I am here on behalf of my fellow educators who need people to share their frustrations and who have their back. I am you. I don't work for this district, so therefore, I can have no repercussions for what I say this evening. That means I'm talking for you. This disheartens me to have to say this. There are many people here who are afraid to speak. That's sad. There are people who are frustrated, and I hear your frustration. I understand. Those of you, you're passionate about your children and the district, that radiates very well. I am sad that this district is losing the amount of people that you are. That's unheard of. These people are your neighbors, grandparents, friends, family members, and many others who live and work in the district as well. How can this board be so complacent in not understanding the power of such a horrific vote? Our support staff is our children's lifeline. Let me say that again. Our children everywhere is our children's, our support staff is our children's lifeline. We, as parents, depend on our children, not only being taught in the schools, but being cared for and loved by the adults that they see each and every day. I asked the board, do you have a child? Hopefully, you do. Have they ever needed a Band-Aid? Have they ever needed help opening their milk carton at lunch? Have they ever needed a shoulder to cry on? Have they ever needed a hug? Have they ever needed a person to give them encouraging word? Have they ever needed someone to hold their head as they're barfing in the garbage can? Of course, they have. And you, as parents, are working. And you're not with your children, but there is someone there, and that's a support staff member. They were comforted by that support staff. You, as parents, are comforted, knowing that you're sending your children to school with people who are certified and people who care for their children and their students. Why? It's amazing to me. We grow up as little kids and become adults, and many of us become teachers. I'm one of you. Some of these people up here, also, were teachers. You are all a teacher from the very beginning when you have a child. Don't ever forget that. That is in your heart and it is part of you. Let me explain. I am so appalled by what I'm hearing here tonight. Everyone has spoken very eloquently, but it saddens me to know there is another district in New Jersey who is going through what they're going through. It's appalling. There is money. They need to find it and they need to support you and your children. So, let me go back. I know that the superintendent says many things. I have a superintendent as well, and they talk like this, and they talk like this. And it's all lip service. Most of it is lip service. And I say that with due respect, because my superintendent and I, we go round and round, and that's okay. But at the end of the day, we're there for the kids, and I hope your superintendent is the same. So, I encourage all of you board members to remember, you are parents, you are grandparents, you are neighbors to these people out here. Vote no on this massive reduction in staff. Vote no. Tell your superintendent, this is your district. These are your people. These are your children. These are your neighbors. Do the right thing, because this is not right. You are here because you are employees. The people of Washington Township have employed these board members to do the right thing. Give them the confidence that they gave in you when they voted for you to be part of their board. They asked you to do the right thing. And I know tonight, many of you did, by allowing people to talk and go beyond the five minutes. I applaud those board members. Take up Greg Gordy's offer. Listen to what he has to say, because those numbers were, in fact, given by this board. They were not made up. I am an NJEA member. Many of these people in this room are, and I can attest to Greg Gordy. I know him. I have had him in my district. He is a good man, and he is doing the right thing. Now, board members, vote no. Thank you.
I am Molly Hour. I am a resident, taxpayer, voter, and most importantly, a mother to a student at Burgess. Dr. Hibbs, earlier tonight, you said words matter, and they do. I would like to walk you through the words you used tonight. For instance, you said, "We had to spend money by a certain date." But then that was corrected to actually be earmarked to the money by a certain date. There is a difference, and it's an important difference, and it's a difference that should be communicated to this board. However, more importantly, I want to address the words you used tonight in regards to the non-renewal emails. You said that you could have done things differently. I hope you meant that you should have done things differently. What the administration did in sending out non-renewal emails in the middle of a school day to the people we trust our kids with was a terribly irresponsible decision. Who knows how people could have reacted to that news? Furthermore, doing it during Teacher Appreciation Week was cruel. Claiming you did not schedule Teacher Appreciation Week tonight was a sad excuse. I am not in an educational role. I work with casinos, and I make it my business to know when Teacher Appreciation Week is. As the superintendent of this district, I expect you to know. This administration is supposed to represent our community, and this representation is not one we, as a community, are okay with. What changes do you plan to make internally when it comes to communication, to our educational staff and community? And also, what changes do you plan to make to your internal operations to ensure this HR nightmare never happens again? If words matter, please also clarify the difference between workforce reductions and non-renewals. To me, the intention is the same. Is this just a tactic to get around negotiating with our unions? And to the board, I appreciate all of your sacrifices in serving our community. However, it is troubling to know that you passed a budget in which, using your own words tonight, you were not completely familiar with. We, as a community, expect you to be familiar with it. You should not hold this position if you do not have the time to fully examine and understand our budgets before passing them. And the president of this board stated earlier tonight that the board could not hold a motion to overturn these decisions that have been already made, because it seemed arbitrarily. But it seems to me, from the conversations tonight and the information that has been shared, that the only decision that was made arbitrarily was to pass this budget in the So, as a resident, a taxpayer, a voter, and a mother, I ask you, once again, to call for a motion to undo what has been done until there is more time, like you have asked for, to clarify all of this miscommunication. Thank you.
Shacter? Sorry about that.
Good evening. I'm Tari Shacter. I'm a parent of three girls and I've lived in township for 15 years. My daughters attend Burgess Elementary, and I'm so very sorry to anyone who has worked for our school district and received that email in their inbox earlier this month. It is unacceptable for anyone to receive notice of termination via email. This is not only incredibly insensitive, it is a huge safety risk, not only to teachers and other staff, but certainly our children. What was the contingency plan if these employees had simply decided to walk off their jobs? You assume that would not be an issue, which underscores how valuable and absolutely priceless these employees are. You must not have been that worried that they would, that they would remain available and dedicated to our students for the rest of the school year, and we owe them better. How was this personnel communication vetted prior to release? And what steps have since been taken to establish a safer and more professional process moving forward? I would like an explanation why was it advised to move forward with non-renewal versus a reduction in force? If these positions remain, this underscores my more global concern that despite stating this is part of a long-term strategy, this is merely a reactionary measure that will negatively impact our community for years to come. Why can't parents and the community and teachers have more transparency around what plans are in place left by the gaps of these non-renewals? Some concerning proposed changes include no more computer classes at the elementary level and the state curriculum requirements taught will have to be picked up by a librarian, which, after last year, there isn't even one librarian for each school, or the primary classroom teachers. These program losses are absolutely unacceptable. How in 2024 are we eliminating computers while at the same time requiring more and more technology-dependent assignments? I wonder what our test scores will look like at the elementary level when every assessment is on a computer. Last meeting, the board said that this was not a reduction in force. What is the board's plan for the positions that were not renewed for next year if all IEPs will be satisfied and programs won't be affected? How is this actually going to result in any savings? These projected short-term fixed savings won't last long once we start to experience the very real costs of the bad publicity and negative impact on employee engagement. I'm certain it's happening as we speak. It's not just the costs associated with the loss of knowledge and expertise of the experienced employees, but you've sent a clear message to our best and most talented educators that will be felt for years to come, even if we can change course now. I'm sure resumes have been updated, jobs postings have been checked, and networks engaged. What steps to counteract this bad publicity will you take in order to attain your stated goals of hiring the best and the dream team? What is your plan to not just retain this talent, but attract them? When a quick search will lead candidates to the headline, "Parents and staff spar with Washington Township school board officials over board cuts." What will your response be next year to a top candidate when asked how you plan to handle these budget issues in the future? A candidate with multiple offers will now think twice before joining township community. Even the best and most dedicated employees are going to be totally burnt out by this plan to do even more with less. We're making headlines for the wrong reasons. This is negatively impacting our students right now, and to claim otherwise is putting our community in opposition rather than uniting us to focus on solutions. It's important we come together at this time to find a solution moving forward that actually makes sense and doesn't rely on formulas in a spreadsheet to dictate a bad plan going forward. Cutting people will cost us. You must vote tonight to reinstate these employees. Thank you.
Hi, Tari. How are you? So, I mean, the first thing is that we will absolutely never send out an email during the school day ever again. We absolutely will never do that. Let me address that. I think we've addressed some of these points, and you had a lot of questions. So, plans will be disseminated in due time. We definitely have no plans to assess everything on a computer. We will definitely not cut programs, and we believe we can find a way to roll the computer standards into a different area.
Waz?
But I'm Candace Maraz. I have lived in this town my whole life. My maiden name was Abbott. It's a lot easier to say than Maraz. You might know my mom. Her name is on a building that's here, and she'd be rolling in her grave right now if she was seeing all this. Sorry. I wasn't planning on getting up here, but when tiered support was mentioned, I got very heated and hot. I've been an interventionist for the last five years. In being an intervention, for four of those years, I've been in the classroom. I've taught Tiered Support 12, I've taught Tiered Support 11, and I've taught Tiered Support 9. In addition to that, I've also taught our English enrichment class. If you don't know, that's the class for the students that have not met the state requirement, and they need a test of record for the NJGPA. Speaking of the NJGPA, myself and the other interventionists were put into the position of shadowing our counseling team in the NJGPA to give that test. We've just been taken out of, away from our students in order to run the NJSLA for the past couple weeks. When we were pulled, we were very concerned about our students meeting their needs as interventionists. We push in, we pull these kids out, and not only to mention our intervention kids, but now I've pulled out of my classroom as well. Because I'm not just an interventionist, I'm also a teacher. So, when you talk about having four teachers and we're losing those teachers being in a classroom, you're not, because we have two interventionists that are teaching it, we have one teacher that has a sixth class, so it's really only one teacher that's impacted by that. When we asked about that, of being, taking away from our students, we were worried about the impact on our students. We were told that we, they value our work, but state testing is mandatory, and they don't give us more staff, so we do the best with what we have, and unfortunately, that's a trade-off. So, I guess our kids and their needs are just a trade-off. We're pushing these academies. I want to know what the class size will be. So, as Ms. Zucala said, we'll have about 27 kids in an English class. They have to take it for four years. We're a tested subject. Right now, our enrichment numbers, we would have 112 students currently don't meet the test of record in English. I want to know how many sections of enrichment we're going to have, what those class sizes are going to look like, and are you going to look at and see what our academies that we're pushing, because English doesn't matter, what those academy sizes are going to be compared to our English classes? Some of our tiered support classes, if you break them up into two classes, they will be smaller or larger than some of our smaller classes that our kids have in electives. So, that's just my concern, what our class sizes are going to be, what's important, pushing these business electives or all these academies, or teaching our kids how to love literature and how to read and write.
Melissa McNally.
Hi Candace. All right, so, we're going to definitely get all the program details out to you, and we do believe in, you know, I think you mentioned the love of literature, and we're not pushing business courses over the love of literature. So, I understand your passion, so just stay tuned for the details. So, we will disseminate all the details to you, for sure.
Melissa McNally, teacher of 25 years and WTEA Elementary Vice President. I didn't really plan on speaking tonight. I didn't really plan on speaking tonight. I've done a lot of speaking, and I think I'm just all speak-dout. I feel like it doesn't have an impact, and so I didn't feel really enthusiastic about doing it tonight, but I'm still going to because I can't not try. I think it's ironic tonight that when we had several hundred people waiting to view the board meeting via YouTube, we weren't broadcasting live for over 45 minutes during the presentation of the budget numbers.[625.16][625.16](APPLAUSE). I'm hearing it was tech problems, but I just think it's quite a coincidence, and I think a lot of people turned off because they didn't think they'd be able to get on, and that's a shame because we had a lot of support. In terms of the budget, I may be a phys ed teacher, but it doesn't take a genius to figure out that the math tonight just wasn't mathing. It wasn't adding up. A slide was shown earlier in the presentation that showed an increase in staff each year over the past four to five years, and this was used as part of the reason for our financial shortfall. Two slides later, we showed a slide indicating numbers that staff were cut each year over the last four to five years to rationalize that this year is not unique. Which is it? Did we cut staff, or did we have an increase in staff? You can't have it both ways. Tonight, I heard student numbers are decreasing, and 30 minutes later, heard that they were increasing. Which picture do you want to paint? Pick one, please. Much of this is indicative of the lack of respect for what we, those of us working in the trenches, all do here. You're insulting our intelligence, and it's a smack in the face to those of us who know the truth. We know money was allocated to improve the appearance of many areas that were not budgeted for. If they were not budgeted for, the money had to come from somewhere. Improvement to bathrooms at Central, replacement of flooring at Central that was cosmetic, this is not even a student-centered area. District-wide painting, et cetera. What cuts were made at Central, where there is no direct student contact? Why does Dr. Hibbs have not one but two secretaries? One paid through ESS all year, when many of our own secretaries were cut? Where are the four administrative cuts? I asked this last week, and it was not answered. I'm not asking for specific human resource info like names, just positions, like ours, that were cut and talked about. And actual positions, please, not administrators that are being transferred from areas that are being dissolved like elementary computers. Why weren't the administrative salaries listed on the agenda last week as the teacher salaries were? I asked this also last week, and it was never answered.[759.44][759.44](APPLAUSE). The fact is that we are not in a financial crisis. To be clear, because words matter, we are in a priority crisis. We are in a transparency crisis. We have classes at the elementary level with 28 and 29 students. We've undertaken bringing back many, many students into the district with very specific needs, but the district keeps pulling away more and more support from these programs. But we prioritize bleachers. We are hurting children and going down a path that we cannot reverse. We are developing a reputation of a district that is not supporting and appreciating our staff in a time when we can barely hire. This is going to come back to haunt us. We have to get ahead of this problem. An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. Invest in us so we can invest in the children of this community. Overturn this vote tonight. Why wait? Regardless of the conflicting budget numbers, there has got to be a better way than cutting the legs off the table. Show your willingness to stand behind those who stand behind your children, our children. Thank you.[839.32][839.32](APPLAUSE).
Randy Ford?
My name's Randy Ford. I'm an eight-year resident of the town. I live in Herdage Valley section of, sorry, my phone just turned off. Anyway, I have three boys in the district, all at Herfell Elementary. I should also note that I'm a corporate attorney, but I'm not here representing anyone except myself and my family. I received a district-wide letter from Dr. Hibbs about the budget on May 9th, and so I decided to watch the first meeting of the board since I moved to town, and that was last week's meeting. So, four hours in, a motion and a second was made to approve items L1 through L48 on the agenda. During the discussion section of that meeting, Mrs. Baker made a motion to amend item L14, and even after I know Mr. Weiss isn't here, but when he cautioned the board members about possible ethics complaints associated with seconding that motion, at least two other board members audibly seconded the motion. Despite there being a motion to amend and second on the floor, Mr. White went on to counsel this board that the original motion approving L1 through L48 needed to be, quote, "dealt with now because it's on the table," and that, quote, "Mrs. Baker's timing was off." Finally, when a member of the public, not saying this is the right thing to do, but yelled out about a motion to amend, Mr. Weiss stated, quote, "Under Robert's Rules of Order, we'll actually know that's not the way we have done it here." I don't really know what Mr. White meant by that comment, but I'd like to remind Mr. Snyder, who is here, and the Board of District Policy 0164. That expressly states, "Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised, shall govern the Board of Education in its deliberations and acts in all cases." I'd also like to point out, I have a copy if anybody wants it, Robert's Rules of Order specifically states that a motion to amend takes precedent over a main motion that it proposes to amend. And when a main motion's on the floor, there are a handful of other options that could have been available to this board if Mr. Weiss made you aware of them instead of reiterating that you could only vote no, yes, abstain on all or some of the items. I say all of this because you were the board members with the authority to make decisions, not the solicitor. Mr. Ross, you're the board president. You have the authority to provide over the body, not the solicitor, not the superintendent. I'll be the first to tell you that just because an attorney says something, doesn't make I implore everyone up here to ask more questions, ask for backup data, ask for details, and finally, before voting on this budget, explore all available options before taking a particular course of action. That was all I was going to say, except the only other thing I'd like to say is I'd like to commend Mr. Serrano, who's probably on a bathroom break. But that took a lot of courage to make a motion to relieve the five-minute rule, and I think it made me feel a lot better about this board after watching the five-and-a-half-hour marathon meeting last week. So thank you again for your time. I just want to say too, I do think everyone up here cares. I know that said a lot, but I truly do believe that, or else you wouldn't be up there. And again, thank you very much.[1095.13][1095.13](APPLAUSE).
Kevin McNamara?
So, just to let you know, I know the crowd is kind of thinning out here, but I did just check YouTube, and there are still 500 people watching at home. So, act like this is still a full house. So, I don't envy your job up there, and I wouldn't want to be in any of your positions. I would like to receive some of your paychecks, but I don't want any of your positions. Now, I love being a teacher. I love it. My mom actually spoke about my mom last week. Oh, remember, I'm the guy that's going to be like the pain in the neck from now on. And just FYI, April Renzetti is training me, so...[1171.13][1171.13](LAUGHTER). But my mom found this journal, and it was from Mrs. DeGroot's second-grade class at Burgess School, and it said, "I want to be a teacher when I grow up." And she showed that to me, and, you know, it's just kind of cute. So, Teresa Coco, that was my 12th grade English teacher, and to this day, she is the reason that I stand up here, a firm believer that a good teacher can change the world, can make you see things from an entirely different point of view. She was very blunt with us and told us that, yes, she had to teach us what was in the curriculum. However, the curriculum wasn't her goal for the year. Her goal for the year was to make us more interesting people. She wore black every day and lived on South Street in Philly. She gave off a really strong Diane Keaton vibe to me, and it was the 90s, and like Father of the Bride came out, and First Wives Club, so I was really into it.[1238.23][1238.23](LAUGHTER). So, she took our class to see the Phantom of the Opera and to the Museum of Art, because, as she said, "If you just learn what's in these four walls, then I have not done my job teaching you." She wrote wildly in cursive on the board in chalk, and if we didn't get the notes written down quick enough, it's because we weren't in the moment with her. You see, passion breeds passion. She had us read everything from Beowulf to Sir Gawain and the Green Knight to the Mist of Avalon to the Once and Future King. We learned so much about Camelot that we left 12th grade experts on the topic. One day, while I was in her room between classes or after school, the topic of my future came up. I was unsure of what the next step was for me, even though I knew that I wanted to be a teacher. She gave me advice that I still pass on to my students. Don't ever pass up an opportunity to make yourself a more interesting person. There's a much larger world waiting for you outside of WTHS. I agreed, there was. And I'll never be able to thank that teacher for the most valuable lesson I've ever received. And now, here we are, cutting teachers. We're cutting staff that can and do enrich the lives of your children. Last week, I spoke of three teachers in my hallway alone that were cut. These teachers hold master's degrees and are dual-certified with 20 years' experience apiece. In fact, according to the most recent school performance report from the state, 42% of our teachers in this building alone hold their master's degree. These teachers have a rapport with their students, your children. That rapport and passion for their subject builds confidence in their students. As Rita Pearson, and we all know who Rita Pearson is, says, "Every child deserves a champion, an adult who will never give up on them, who understands the power of connection and insists that they become the best that they can possibly be." I believe that our very own Dr. Nathan would agree with the late Rita Pearson. Did a little bit of Googling, as I tend to do, and I found a New York Times article from February 14th, 2001, titled "Education: Helping New Teachers Survive the Hardest Years." In this article, Ms. Nathan is described as a fresh-out-of-college science teacher who is struggling. Quote, "There have been plenty of days when Ms. Nathan thought of quitting, that she has not, is in no small measure thanks to Mrs. Mershtina, her mentor, a fellow teacher, and Dr. Nathan's own former science teacher." Talk about the power of a good teacher. And now, here we are, cutting teachers. And then, there's Ms. Bloom, our newest board member, who actually garnered the most votes in our last election. Ahead of the election, the Sun newspaper asked Mrs. Bloom why she was running for a seat on the board. Her response was, quote, "Because education has been important to me for well over 40 years." She also said that "I will be listening, researching, learning, sharing ideas, and trying to represent our students, staff members, parents, and citizens of Washington Township. Also, two of my four children are teachers." And yet, Mrs. Bloom voted to approve a budget that cut 36 teachers and aides. Exactly how important are teachers to education? Never mind. Your vote kind of answered that question for us. And then, in that same Sun article, Mr. Little Liberty was asked the same question. Why are you running for an elected seat? And I didn't even have this one written down, but something happened earlier that I felt the need to say it. Quote, "I began attending Board of Education meetings and saw a lack of trust from the community, scandals with board members, and quite a bit of dysfunction. I've always been a person who believes that rather than complain about a problem, get involved and try to fix it. I believe I bring a practical approach to the Board of Ed, trying to understand the issues and looking for reasonable solutions." Sir, I don't know you, but getting up and walking away is not a reasonable solution. Mocking a speaker is not a reasonable solution, and I think that you owe that speaker an apology. I love to hold for applause. Dr. Hibbs, also a passionate pioneer for personal learning. In your March 2017 blog titled "My Journey to Personalized Learning: Superpower Stardom", you talked about your desire for education to meet the needs of each student. Quote, "I have worked with my district to create not just an overall vision for PL, personal learning, but also to create subdivisions for data, SGI, digital tools, and students' set learning goals. We have actual processes for data. We analyze achievement data and local data mining, essential opportunities for improvement on both the district and school level. For instance, as a superintendent, I can tell you that on the last mathematics common assessment, 40% of my fifth-grade students did not understand that .6 is equivalent to .60," end quote. A lot of that was like technical education jargon, gobbledygook, but, you know, it goes back to, you do love data, and I get it. And, you know, in the bio that you wrote, you even referenced that you're a constant advocate for educational technology. So it's no wonder we have now become a Google school. But it's important. .6, you want to know who is not meeting what is being asked of them. You want to know. It makes sense. A teacher should know that. You know what? Your children's teachers do know that. I know that a student in my first-period class has not yet been able to master the Anchor Standard NJSLSA.W1, which is to write arguments to support claims in an analysis of substantive topics or text, using valid reasoning and relevant and sufficient evidence. It's the standard. How do I know that? I talk to him. When he answers a question, I ask him, "Why do you think that? What proof do you have?" My students just finished writing research papers, so I've had this conversation a lot. They know that the only way to win an argument is with facts to back it up, so I challenge them, and I insist that they leave my classroom better than when they entered. And now, here we are, wanting to cut teachers. On the data side, as Mr. Hibbs, sorry, Dr. Hibbs, likes to observe, our ELA test scores on the NJSLA increased and met the state target. So, thank you, teachers, for your dedication to our students. The ninth-grade scores jumped nearly 20 points from the 21-22 year to the 22-23 school year. Thank you, teachers. Based on the NJGPA, which is a graduation proficiency assessment, over 90% of our 11th-grade class is graduation-ready, while only 80% of the state is graduation-ready. And yet, we are wanting to cut teachers. Cutting teachers leads to increased class sizes. According to a study on Chalkbeat.org, "The most famous and rigorous study of class-size reduction took place in Tennessee in 1985, when some kindergarten students were randomly assigned to unusually small classes through third grade. Test scores in the classes of 13 to 17 students quickly surpassed scores in the larger classes of 22 to 25. Those gains persisted for years." How are scores going to be impacted now that the English department, a tested subject, has eight cuts? The math, you took my line, the math simply ain't mathin'. On the other side of that, your children are not data. They are not numbers. They are not percentages, at least not to us. At least not to us. We know your children. They sit with us, and they cry when things are not going well in their lives. They come rushing toward us excited to tell us what they did over the weekend, show us what they're wearing to the prom that's on Thursday, or what college they finally decided on. Dr. Hibbs, at the August 22nd board meeting, you told the community to trust the administrators because they were educated and had their doctorates. To the community and the board, I believe that it is time that you trust the educated teachers who work side-by-side with your children every single day. Because it is our belief that every child deserves a champion.
I just want to make one clarification. Mr. Yurdi, I was not mocking you. It was not my intent to mock you when I got up. We're not mocking any speaker. I got up and walked out because of what I perceived as a blatant disregard for our board policy on the time commitment, as well as the speaking order, and the lack of willingness to enforce that policy. That's why I got up. I appreciate that Mr. Serrano followed the policy and made a motion for the full board to amend that policy for the night. And I didn't agree with it, but I follow that and support it. But in no way did I mean to mock you in any way. Oh, I don't wear a watch. I'm just telling you I don't wear a watch.
All right. Jennifer.
One sec. Hi, Mr. McNamara, I want to address just a few things. I'd love to have a sit-down conversation with you as well. So going backwards and poking fun at personalized learning, you know, the use of data and small-group instruction and digital tools and student-set learning goals, I'm really sure you weren't putting down. Because honestly, I would hope no teacher in our district would ever make fun at those four things. Do I believe that kids are percentages or numbers? Absolutely not. But, you know, and relationships are so essential for, you know, there's a great expression, you must reach them to teach them. And that, there's no measure on how important that is. It is so important to reach our kids. But it is also important to have the other piece of it as well, because quantifiable or qualitative measures, they're not quantifiable. So, you know, when you're looking at 5.mBTA1, which I think that standard is the one that you're referring to, you know, what we learned in that moment was that 40% of our kids didn't understand that equivalency. And I'll explain why so that you understand it. We realized that envision math in 4th grade taught students a certain way that they got that problem wrong the year before. And that what they were doing was they were actually adding a zero onto a decimal, and they were thinking it got exponentially bigger. And because we had that data point, we went back and we not only revised our curriculum, we revised our units of study, we taught our teachers and our math facilitators how to teach that better, and then we actually put PD in across the entire district. So the whole point of that was that never is just one data point, one thing. But the whole system is really important to having the Deming, Plan Do, Check Act philosophy. So I just want to make sure that it's definitely, it's definitely not, I think you said, educational gobbledygook. It's actually total best practice. No, I think, I don't think so. But we can go back and listen. But thank you, sir.
Ralph. Hey, Ralph. I just want to make a motion to extend the meeting past 11 o'clock.
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion? Any discussion?
Any discussion on that?
Yeah.
Is there a way, and this is, I guess, a question for Slistor. We have items that need to be voted upon. There's probably about another two hours with the cards there. Is there a way we can make a motion to at least vote on the items that need to be passed tonight and then continue public comment?
I wouldn't recommend doing that because these public comments are tailored towards the agenda items that you're going to vote on. So if the goal is to continue with both, then the answer for me would be no. The recommendation for me would be no.
We have a motion to extend the time and a second and discussion.
Sorry?
Oh, I thought I was starting. Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Ms. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. La Liberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tom Zach?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Okay. Jennifer Wells?
Good evening, everyone. Bear with me, I was not intending to speak tonight, and it is way past my bedtime. However, as we started talking about the cuts to the English department, I feel like I need to put it into perspective for people who haven't been here as long as I have. This is my 21st year in Washington Township. I have been an English teacher that entire time at the high school. I started when the school had, oh, Patty had the numbers, yeah, 3,200 students whenever I started. My class sizes that year were around 27, 28, right? When I tell you that it's hard to be a good English teacher with 27 or 28 students, I'm not saying that as a guess. I can tell you it is very hard. It is almost impossible. I have been doing this for a long time because I love it. There are times when I wish that I had been really interested in something else, right? There are times when I wished that I had chosen a different path that would allow me more time for my family, for my husband, for my other interests in my life. And I choose to give that time to my students. To give them all of me while I am in this building. To help them to learn not standards. Yes, standards inform what I do. They are not the core of who I am as a teacher, and they are not the only thing that I am responsible for in my classroom. I know the standards inside out. I don't need to look at the document anymore. I've been doing this for a long time. And the English standards, quite frankly, while they've changed slightly over that time, they haven't changed significantly because what we do is fundamental to all areas of education. All areas of education. I 100% agree that all these other subject areas are extremely important. It was a science teacher who kept my middle-school child on track when her friends decided not to be her friends anymore. It was a math, it was actually an accounting teacher that helped my oldest child graduate from high school. But all of those subject areas cannot be supported if kids can't read and write. We cannot have success in even math without that foundation of reading. My youngest child, while she was learning to read, struggled immensely. I'm pretty sure she's dyslexic. She has always understood numbers, but she couldn't do math until she figured out how to read. Because in younger grades, we know how many words you need to have to be able to express that concept. And we need to be understanding that we, as a department, are not just teaching them English. We are teaching them the foundations that they need for anything they choose to do. This is the conversation I have with my students. When you're learning how to look at a document, analyze the rhetorical choices that writers are making, that isn't just about some score I'm going to give you on an assessment. That's about you becoming an active participant in the community, in the world around you. It's about understanding when people are using rhetorical tactics, maybe a little logical fallacy, in order to convince us that something that's fundamentally not true is true. We are important. And I can tell you that there is no way that I can be as effective as I have been, and I have been extremely effective. If you continue to pack my classes with more kids than I can talk to, because my job isn't just grading their papers, you can force me to do that outside of class time. I'll have to find creative ways to be able to live a life. But that's not what's best for kids. The most effective thing that happens in my classroom, and you can ask Eddy about this, most effective thing that happens in my classroom is conferences with kids. How am I supposed to conference with 27 or 28 kids in a high school classroom when I see them three days out of four? I can tell you right now, my AP classes this year are already larger than they should be. One of them started out at 23. It takes me an entire cycle to conference on one essay. One essay. But I won't give that up because that is how kids learn best. I know that from 21 years of experience. Writing comments on a paper, that's not how kids learn. The more kids you give English teachers, the lower those state test scores are going to be, and the lower their achievement is going to be across the board. Please reconsider, especially at the secondary level. This goes back so long. When we cut the time of instruction at the middle level for ELA, that had a humongous impact on the way that kids are prepared at the high school level. We don't have the same fundamental understanding of how to craft and structure writing as many other districts, because we're the only district I know of that has that little instruction at the middle-school level. But we're supposed to make miracles happen. And quite frankly, we're all tired already, and I don't know what this is going to look like if those numbers hold true. Four positions at the high school level? 15 teachers for four grade levels? Think about what that means. Think about what it means for your kids. Thank you.
Christian Hale.
Do you mind, I think we have a student that put in a card. If you don't mind just putting the student at the forefront? No, I don't know if he's a student. We also have another student I know.
Name?
Emily Westenberger. I believe she put in a card. I'm sure it would be good if we could move any student up to the front of the line, please. Sorry to call you out, Emily, but I see you sitting there.
Hi, my name is Christian. I actually just graduated, so I'm an adult now. I didn't plan to speak tonight at all. Actually, I'd first like to start to mention Ms. Wells. She was my junior-year English teacher. Everything she's saying, word for word, is true. She made me a better person from the time I walked out that class. So I did graduate last year. I'm now a student at Ohio State, and you have managed to cut everything I ever participated in somehow, so this is why I'm speaking tonight. But the fences and the banners outside look really, really nice. So I'm going to start with music real quick. So I'm actually an engineering student, so you're like, why on earth is he talking about music? Music is probably the biggest role anything has ever played in my life, ever. Just for reference here, at Washington Township, I was a member of the Wind Ensemble Jazz Band, Marching Band, Symphony Orchestra, and I was the vice president of Triumph. I also had all-state honors in bands, and I actually didn't teach myself the saxophone, believe it or not. Mr. Spencer back there, Ms. Maxwell was my first-order music teacher. They're all here. They're all incredible people. And just along that list, Dr. Bouchang in elementary school and Mr. TC in middle school, they all helped me along the way. And if I had one of them running around constantly trying to manage all these students, I don't think I would have ever stayed in music, and I don't think my life would ever have been the same. Now, the reason I come back to speak at the post-secondary level about music is that it influences you in every part of your life. I still continue with music to this day. I am involved with the Ohio State Marching and Athletic Bands, formerly known as the best damn band in the land. That would never have happened with such a low level of staffing to the music department. And I don't see, like, is Mr. Spencer back there? I worry he's going to have a heart attack like every day. This man does like five people's jobs already, and I don't understand how it's going to work. Anyways, I rest my case on music. The last time I was in front of the Board of Ed, I was actually speaking fluent German. I was recognized for achieving my state seal of bioliteracy, so I'm recognized by the government for being literate in German. Now, what this education department has provided me in world language, I was actually recognized on a national level for speaking German. I was in the top 10% of German speakers nationally. And I can only accredit to that to the three people that have, four people that have actually influenced me in this department. I started speaking German in 5th grade, not only just as like a requirement, but because my family stems from Germany, so I wanted to learn more about myself. I learned so much from Herr McCloskey, Frau Graham, Frau Brocker, and even your principal at the high school, Herr Anderson, have helped me along this way. And to speak on how this has impacted my life, the last time I was in front of the Board of Ed, I said this sentence in German. Ich habe mehr als eine Sprache gelernt, ich habe eine Kultur gelernt, wenn ich ein andere Leben gelernt. Which means, I learned more than a language here. I learned a culture, and I learned a different life. And I have become a better person becoming this language department, and I can't stand to see it get cut the way it's going to be. I'm going to keep going because so much stuff is getting cut. Technology, so I studied aerospace engineering, so I happen to be at the forefront of technology and education. That's kind of just what I do now. I have never used Google ever. All I use is Microsoft, to be honest with you. That's the only thing we use at a lot of the big institutions. If I had been educated on the Chromebook, I would probably be so lost right now. Not to mention if I had never had computer class when I was in school, I mean, could you imagine, like, I had to develop an entire video game last semester? If I had no idea how to send an email, I think I'd be so lost. Anyways, that's all I have to say about technology. I'm going to talk about support staff, and you're like, oh my God, how can this kid talk about support staff? I'm sure you've heard the name Sherry Heil in the past few weeks. That's my mom. She is a fantastic teacher. What this has done is devastating to support staff. My mom loves her job so much, and I'm sure you're going to hear that all the time, like, oh my God, all these teachers love their jobs. I worry sometimes that she loves her kids at school more than me. And to hear her panic and to hear her nearly break down in tears every day after school because she doesn't know if she's going to be with her special-needs kids the next year is absolutely heartbreaking, coming back from college to see that. And I just need you to understand the role that she plays in these kids' lives and that the other people she works with play in these kids' lives. She goes to their sports games on Saturdays. Who the hell does that? So to kind of wrap things up, I was only going to speak after I heard a comment that this is supposed to like somehow maintain a high quality of achievement. I don't see how that's going to happen if you cut the roots of everything that's making this high quality. Thank you.
Emily Westenberger.
Hi, my name is Emily Westenberger. I mean, as we are now all aware of, I'm a student here, I'm a senior. You may or You may or may not know me, but I am one of the top five students in the class of 2024. But I say that not as a brag for myself, but as an acknowledgement that I am in this position in very large part because of my teachers. It's very easy for me to just say, oh, whatever. What's here is here. I'm going to be gone next year. But I care about the future of the students and teachers here beyond my involvement. Like, I'm a student. I have projects to do. I have quizzes to study for. But I stayed and I wouldn't have stayed if I didn't care. Now, I do want to begin with this. I don't envy your position. I would not want to be there. And none of what I say is meant to be in any disrespect towards any of you. However, I really hope that you do value the words of the staff and stu- sorry, students speaking because we are the ones living it. Sure, you celebrate our successes, but do you understand the day-to-day, what really affects us on our journey to where we are? It's necessary to see the struggle to fully and authentically appreciate the rewards. I'd like to briefly speak from the musician's perspective and on behalf of the staff within the music program. I am in six different music programs in this school. Six of them. This year, I'm enrolled in the band, the orchestra, and the chorus as academic classes. We, as a district, provide ourselves in being one of the best music education schools in the state. It is stated in almost every single program from the at least 16 concerts I've performed here. This program has produced magnificent musicians who have received countless awards for their work. We have a wonderful plan for Performing Arts Academy. If we provide ourselves in our music program, how do you expect to continue these accolades when the students' foundations are being removed? This music program and the staff within it have very literally saved my life. But I'll spare you the sob story because it's very late. My love of music and the support these teachers have given me are the reason I'm standing here today. I would hate to see a new generation of students who do not have this foundation struggle to find an outlet for the struggles in their lives. I'm not sure if you've noticed, but your music teachers, and quite frankly, every one of your teachers, serve roles far beyond their job description. Almost every single teacher I have had wants nothing more than their students to succeed and will bend over backwards to support every student they have. The proposed solution to the issue of the staff cuts will very quickly spread teachers extremely thin. Most of the teachers are already working past what they're paid for on paper for the students. They are already spread thin. If the priority is our education, the education of the students, bending the staff until they break is the opposite of what we need. I unfortunately cannot say I'm proud to be a product of this district, but I sure am proud to be a product of the teachers and staff who helped me to get where I am today. I implore you to think about what happens behind the scenes, behind the statistics. I'd like you to remember, I speak as a student, one of the people that should be supported by this district. You absolutely cannot put a price tag on a valuable education. Thank you.
Carolyn Avis. Carolyn Avis. Okay. James Cho.
Good evening. I was not prepared to speak tonight until about halfway through this presentation. And quite frankly, I'm a little bit puzzled or appalled. We heard our board say, I don't understand. I don't know the numbers. Your own numbers. I heard the board say, you have your numbers. We have our numbers. Last I checked, numbers are numbers. Two is two, right? They're not different anywhere else. And I think most importantly, we're missing a fundamental point here. And that is, it's not about the jobs. It's about the people in those jobs. We have many of our support staff brothers and sisters here tonight. And I can tell you, I can't do their job. I could tell you right now that you can't take somebody who is in the nurse's office and put them on the playground and expect the same result. I have been, in fact, next month will be the end of my 20th year in this district. I've been a teacher. I've been asked to be a part-time guidance counselor, part-time custodian, part-time nurse, part-time tech guy, soon to be part-time computer teacher, apparently. Part-time hall monitor. And during COVID, we were healthcare professionals. Well, now, my question is, whose responsibility is it going to be to manage the shortfall from when the support staff members are cut? Is it going to be my responsibility? So we can add part-time support staff member to the list of duties that us teachers have already. And I will tell you right now, in my building, I get often made fun of, in the most loving way, by the way. Because I'm the yes guy, right? I never say no. People ask me to, Jim, why don't you give up your summer to write curriculum? For two grade levels, by the way. Sure, I'll do it. For $2 an hour, I did the calculation. I'm the yes guy, right? But I will tell you right now, if you ask me to be part-time support staff member, I'm going to say no. It is too- The burden on the staff members here in this township is too great as it is. You can't expect us to do more. And sure, most of us will probably still do more. But that is an expectation that is unrealistic and quite frankly, disheartening to ask. One of my colleagues stood up here and said that we are once again here begging for your mercy. I'm not begging. I don't think we should have to beg. I don't think any of them should have to beg. I think we are all here for a singular purpose. It is not fair to us. We deserve better. And quite frankly, our children deserve better. I was going to say implore, but that implies begging. I ask you all to think about your vote tonight. Thank you.
Jackie Williams.
Hi, I'm Jackie Tiger Williams. I teach fourth grade at Herfield. The first thing I wanted to speak about was just a response to like teachers passing on rumors regarding programming cuts, job cuts. And I think that we are in a position where we might be, as a district, creating that on our own. And specifically what I mean by that is, I was in the faculty room a week ago and I heard like, oh, there's three new elementary health positions posted. And I said, wait, what? We're in the middle of cuts. What do you mean? And it was someone saying, oh, it's something about specials. All right. And then later, maybe the next day, oh, the computer teachers heard that they're not computer teachers anymore. And I said, wait, what? And my next logical question was, oh, no. Who's teaching the computer stuff? Because I know the likely answer is it's me. And, you know, I'm like 140 days into trying to teach the kids to just hit the tab button once to indent a paragraph. And it is a journey. And since the pandemic of taking on so much tech issue stuff and now knowing we are sliding into Google Classroom, I am one of the people very excited for my kids to get Chromebooks. My own personal children have never had to put in a tech ticket for their Chromebook in the many years they've had one. But that does bring on teaching them new things, let alone, you know, potentially teaching all of the old things that the computer teacher was teaching them. So I'm worried that, you know, when we're saying like, oh, no rumors, are we perpetuating that ourselves when we are posting job positions without explanation? Or then telling someone else like, hey, your job is cut? But we don't tell the other people that are being impacted by that cut. That is difficult and I think it's creating its own cycle. I actually came up to speak about something else, though. And that was, first, a question. How many support staff are being cut from or had their hours reduced or are being transferred from elementary buildings? And the reason I'm asking is because last month I had just one of those eye-opening moments. I had a small window of time. My classroom was being used by another teacher. So I was doing some of my preparing in the hallway. And in that moment, another teacher was about 15 feet down. And she was working with a small group providing supports in the hallway. And she was doing a great job. You know, I eavesdrop. She was crushing it. And then a behavior started coming up. One of the kids started getting dysregulated and she was pulling out all her moves. I was like, man, she's really good at this. And it just, that day, it wasn't working. And so I'm watching. And at the same time that she is trying to give the modifications to the multiple kids who need it, she's also trying to manage the child who she's pulled out all her go-to moves and that child is still getting more and more dysregulated. And what she needed in that moment was another human. And luckily, in that moment, I was available and was able to go like, hey, I can get one like here. And we were able to just tag team it, take care of it. But for me, it was a moment, I was like, how do we get here? Like, because 10 years ago, I didn't feel like that was such a normal part of our day where we're like, why are, like, why is it such a normal part of our day now that kids are getting really dysregulated? That same day, about 10 minutes later, I snuck into the art room. I needed to use the giant paper cutter she was teaching. And this is 10 minutes later. And there's another student pretty dysregulated. They're disrupting instruction. And she, you know, handled it in like a positive, neutral way. And it popped right back up. And she couldn't get her instruction done, you know, to get the kids started on their art project. And unfortunately, what I thought in that moment is, she needs another human. And I couldn't be the other human because I had to get back to my class at that point. So I think the thing I keep thinking about is another, like, how did we get here? And I think people might be going, well, maybe this is just a Herfield problem, right? We house our ERI programs, but it's not. Because the students I'm referring to, they're not students that are receiving Program for Emotional Dysregulation. And a lot of them aren't even receiving special services at all. And Dr. Hibbs, two meetings ago I was at, you had noted that we have more behavior struggles than ever, especially since the pandemic. For me, that day really stood out, like, how did we get here? Like, what is going on with behaviors? And often, when all of a teacher's go-to moves aren't working with a behavior challenge, what's most needed is another human. And so what's really standing out to me is, why are we cutting humans when right now, what we need is more humans?
James Cho. Okay. Lori Bathurst. Bathurst? Lori.
It was a duplicate from James, from Jim.
Before I begin, I wanted to say that Washington Township teachers are aware of monumental changes coming in a new school year, such as moving from Power School to Genesis and from Microsoft to Google, which will result in a new email system, a new word processing system, a new virtual meeting system, and new digital presentations. Additionally, we are moving from the Marzano Teacher Evaluation System to the Danielson Evaluation System. Thus far, we have had one Google Day training. As far as staff is currently aware, there is no summer PD planned in these programs, at least as what we currently are aware of based on conversations with leaders in buildings and leaders of departments. When we experienced catastrophic budget cuts for the 2010-11 school year, there was specific communication shared with staff that spring. When we implemented the Achieve NJ Teacher Evaluation Plans, there was communication and training was implemented, so staff was prepared. My name is Lori Bathurst and I am honored to be a member of the Chestnut Ridge Middle School staff. I am a proud Razorback. Some of you are parents or grandparents of proud Razorbacks. This is my 18th year teaching in Washington Township and my 25th year as a teacher. I am fortunate to have served as a Chestnut Ridge Middle School Teacher of the Year, a Washington Township Teacher of the Year, and as a Gloucester County Teacher of the Year. I could not have received that honor if it wasn't for the colleagues I work with in my building, the students I teach, the families that raised those kids, and the programs that we offer in this district. The past few months have been a difficult time for the Washington Township community. It seems like a crisis has been created in our district that is hard to explain because our district hasn't actually lost state funding this school year. I hear about contract costs, healthcare costs, transportation costs, and out-of-district tuition being the cause of a cut of 100 staff members. That is hard to believe because I live in a district that actually has lost state funding and they aren't trying to implement these types of cuts. The district is fully aware of contract costs for several years in the future because of negotiations and should be planning ahead for increased health costs, out-of-district tuition, and transportation. If these four issues were creating the quote-unquote budget constraints purported in our district, I would think that districts across the state would be experiencing this type of budget crisis. Because these four issues are routine issues that districts experience. During tonight's meeting and in previous Board of Education meetings, we have heard about how our student numbers are decreasing and our student numbers are increasing. I'm sorry, our student numbers are decreasing and our staff numbers are increasing. I'm not sure where those additional staff are being hired because when I compare the staff numbers in the 2006-2007 Chestnut Ridge Middle School yearbook for the year I arrived at Chestnut Ridge and those same numbers for the 2023 school yearbook, I saw staff decreases of more than 20 teaching and aid positions and I saw less support staff positions and less administrators meeting the needs of our students. Your staff is working harder every single year to take care of our children. Short examples, we went from two vice principals to one vice principal. We went to five main office support people to three. We used to have seven cafeteria workers. We have five. We have less maintenance crew at night. And yet, all of the work is still being done. Anyone can do these yearbooks to see the changes for themselves. To many community members, this budgetary crisis presents as a false flag scenario. The quote-unquote crisis is being blamed on staff, salary, and health benefits. But these are negotiated by the Board of Education. A comment was made during a previous budget presentation to the board and again tonight regarding increased costs involving substitute coverage because staff is using their negotiated sick or personal days. The state of New Jersey recognized this year that health and wellness involves more than just days when a staff member is struggling with a stomach virus or a chest infection. The state of New Jersey now recognizes that health and wellness also includes preventative care along with medical care responding to an illness for both a staff member and possibly members of their family. Please refrain from citing staff's use of their negotiated benefit as a correlation to an attempt to cut 100 staff positions. In recent years, many citizens across our country have worried that their leaders aren't making decisions that best meet the needs of their community. This reminds me of the scene in The Wizard of Oz when Toto pulls the curtain back, revealing the Wizard of Oz is simply a man standing behind a curtain operating a machine. My observation is that there has been a lack of transparency in this process. In fact, the process has been opaque. The original budget presentation didn't mention any specific numbers of staff cuts or program cuts. As far as I can tell, there has been no announcement of what cuts have been made. Instead, staff have had to share planned cuts with each other. Instead, staff have had to share planned cuts with each other after letters were received and some conversations with administrators took place. Can you please publicly share a list of the positions that you have planned to cut so the Washington Township community can be made fully aware? This shouldn't be a mystery to residents and staff. The information should be accessible on the WTPS website for everyone to review. I have specific questions regarding council's advice. I have noticed a pattern at the meeting previous and this evening regarding council's advice. It seems to be the reason to cover the actions of the district. For example, we have been told council advises non-renewal letters being distributed instead of reduction of forced letters. The council has advised the BOE not to meet with the representatives of the NJEA as a whole group. At the last meeting, the council advised BOE members that motions some members made could result in ethics violations or ethics investigations. Can you please explain these three pieces of advice from council? It is a concern that quote-unquote "on the advice of council" seems like a shield to deflect questions. In closing, I thank all of tonight's attendees for being here. I thank the members of our Washington Township Board of Education for volunteering their time in the service of our community. I invite members of the staff at the Eileen Abbott Central Administration Building and members of the Washington Township Board of Education to come out to our schools during the day, interact with students, interact with teachers, interact with support staff. Board of Education members, please visit the schools, especially the ones you may not have been able to previously visit or that you maybe didn't have a prior personal connection to. Additionally, I invite the administrative staff to collaborate with our teaching and support staff so that we can leverage our combined skill set and experience as educators to strategize and make decisions that are in the best interest of our students.
Tina Haydo.
Good evening. We have a couple people left, and I just want to say I would really like the board, I respectfully request that you table item 40. And the other thing I wanted to say, because it's way past my bedtime, the Chinese word for crisis, it starts with C-R-I, that means danger. If you take the D off, it has anger. I hear a lot of emotions tonight, and that saddens me, but I have great hope and confidence in everybody. And the other side is S-I-S, and it means opportunity, and that's let's make this right tonight. Thank you.
Candy Maxwell.
My name is Candy Maxwell. I'm the band director over at Bunker Hill Middle School. I have been working as a music educator for 30 years, and 23 and a half of those years have been spent here in Washington Township. I wasn't going to speak tonight because, you know, the support staff, it's a much bigger entity, but my job and what I do is just as important, so I made the decision that I needed to come up tonight and be heard. When I made the decision to become a music teacher, I did that because it's the one thing in my life that saved me. And I felt if I become a music educator, maybe I can be that person that can save kids through music. I have been a wreck for about two weeks now, wondering, waiting to find out what's going to happen to the instrumental programs. When we found out that our instrumental band teacher was non-renewed, not for any fault of her own, just non-renewed because of budget cuts, I knew immediately that meant something's going on with our elementary band and string programs. We're being told by Dr. Nathan and Dr. Hibbs, programs aren't being cut. How are we going to sustain an elementary band and instrumental program in six elementary schools with four band directors and four string teachers? I don't know how we're physically going to be able to do it. And we also have rumors going around that the Chestnut Ridge string teacher position is not going to be filled next year. Now, we're down to two middle school string teachers. We don't know what's going on at Orchard Valley yet because we have one of our colleagues, a very dear colleague, who's out on medical leave right now. We're all hoping that he's going to be well and be able to come back in September, but we don't know yet. How do you expect us to run around like we're complete crazy nuts, keep our middle school band programs going, and go down to the elementary schools and recruit kids to keep an entire band program going? It's not feasible. It's not possible. How do I know this? Because I was running back and forth between Bunker Hill and Orchard Valley from January until February until we were able to find a qualified sub to fill in for the Orchard Valley Band Director and finish the year out because we had someone when that person first went out on his medical leave, who was qualified, but we weren't willing to pay the person enough money to keep them. So that person made the decision not to come back as a sub. So then we were without someone again. So Mr. Spencer, our high school band director, was running down to Orchard Valley when he could get down there to run some classes. I was running over to Orchard Valley every day, seventh period, running seventh period band, and running back to Bunker Hill to get back there in time to teach music appreciation class, eighth period. Now, I know that there's ways that you can finagle the schedule to make it work so that we could possibly make it work where I teach at Bunker Hill and then run down to Whitman and Birches and do that, but I don't know how physically I'm going to be able to do that. My kids at Bunker Hill need me up there. If I'm eating lunch, they come down during their study hall times to practice because they want help and they need assistance from me because they're struggling with their music. And I give my lunch up for these kids because I care about the program. When I was hired to become a teacher in Washington Township, this band program, string program, entire music program was huge. When I graduated from college, some of my colleagues that I work with now, I graduated with them from Rowan. When they got the job in Washington Township, everybody was like, wow, you must be a really good music teacher because Washington Township only hires top-notch music teachers because it's the premier district and it's the best music program in South Jersey. When I got the job here, I was so proud that I was a music teacher in Washington Township. And then in 2012, you lopped us off at the knees. You cut our program, and we lost. We used to have two band directors, two string teachers in the elementary school, and a part-time band director because there are six elementary schools that we have with kids. And then you cut it, and then you had one band director, one string teacher, and a part-time band and string teacher who was also running to the kindergarten building at the time when Grenlock was just kindergarten, running around trying to keep the programs going. That's when the numbers started going down. They started going down because people were exhausted. They were only in one building at a time. When I first got here, the band director was in, only went to three buildings. So she was able to form a relationship with those kids. If you make, if these rumors are true, and I know, Dr. Nathan, you've said, you guys have plans. I understand my supervisor's probably involved in these plans, but if you, if one of those decisions is the rumor that I'm hearing is true, and you're going to make us travel, I will not be able to form a bond with the kids at Bunker Hill to keep them in the program to make sure that they join in the high school, and we will ultimately lose numbers even more than we already have. You need to walk in my shoes for a day, for a week, and see how much I put into that program at Bunker Hill. I've only been there five years. When I got there, there were 35 kids total in that program. I'm up to 70. Next year, I'm going to have 80 in that program. How am I going to run an 80-piece band program half a day and then run down to an elementary school or maybe a middle school? I don't know where you're planning on putting me. I don't know. This music program used to have 200 kids on the marching band field. 200 kids marching on that field. It was huge. And where are we today? And you still have music teachers that are extremely passionate about this program. And I'm 54 years old. I went through a very long battle with cancer. I still have it. I came to work every single day. Those kids at Bunker Hill saved me. They helped me get through all my treatments. I will always have this cancer that I have. It will never go away. It, it's just, I have to live with it, and I've learned to live with it. My kids know it. I just don't know how I'm going to be able to have the kind of relationship that I have with these kids now to keep them motivated, to keep them in the program so that Mr. Spencer can have quality musicians up at the high school. You would never put a brand-new kid playing football on the football field playing starting quarterback if he's never played football before. You just can't do it. The kids need the skills down in the elementary schools. And by the way, the parents, they do pay to play an instrument because they rent those instruments. They buy those instruments. Those parents support those kids to play the instruments. And who do the administrators come to then when they want something nice for Veterans Day programs or other things that may happen in the schools? They come to the music teachers. They come to us. When 9/11 hit, I was down at Whitman because I taught down there for about 13, I taught down there for a while until 2019 when I was moved up to Bunker Hill in my dream job, by the way, because band is all I've ever wanted to do. I taught down at Whitman, and the principal came to me, and he said, we need to put together a Veterans Day program for our vets because after what happened with 9/11, we need to show people that we appreciate them for their sacrifices. I was one of the people that spearheaded that program, and it continued all the way until COVID hit. You come to us when you want something nice and special. How are you going to, I don't understand how you're going to expect us to be able to keep this program going if you keep cutting us. I don't know how you're going to do it. And by the way, our elementary band teacher that you did not renew, she's a product of this school district. She spoke last week. I gave her private lessons in high school. She is an incredibly talented musician and band director, and she deserves to keep that job. I really hope that you listen to what I've said today. I hope you understand. We help make kids well-rounded. You heard Christian Heil speak. The kid was involved in everything, and he's now at Ohio State, marching in their athletic band, hoping to one day dot the I on that field. And if any kid is going to dot that I, it's going to be Christian Heil from Washington Township Public Schools. And his mother will have that all over Facebook. We have five high school students that are graduating from the high school that are all majoring in music in some form. Five! Now, I know you may not think that's a lot, but I got to tell you, I think that's enormous. Five seniors graduating, and they're going to major in music, all because of their music teachers from the bottom up, not just Mr. Spencer, not just Ms. Sebastiani, and not our choral director at the high school. It's because we all influenced them in some way. So I beg you to please stop cutting music. You do, I was hoping, I thought for sure, we were safe. You cut us already, we're down to the bare bones. Boom, found out, we're losing staff. So hopefully, if anybody would like to talk to me more, maybe later, I'd be more than willing to talk to a board member, talk to you, Dr. Hibbs, talk to you, Dr. Nathan, whatever you'd like to do. I don't want to be in your seat. I know what you, the decisions that you're making are difficult. You hear what everybody is saying, but I am so passionate about music and so passionate about music education. I would not be the person that I am today if it weren't for me being in a band room when I was in high school. I would have been a lost soul. I don't know where I would be, and I'm so proud that I am here in this township, teaching these children. I'm safe. I don't have to worry. I've been here a long time. But I'm very, very worried about this music program. I'm very worried about the band program. I'm very worried about the string program. And I was hoping that before I retire, I don't know when that's going to be, I don't know if my cancer's going to reek its ugly head back up again, and I'm going to have to make a decision to retire earlier than I want to, but I was hoping that I would be able to finally make a change in the band program. And now I feel like you just, you just made it so I can't. You just made it so I can't. So I really, really hope that you'll reconsider at least the instrumental program down in the elementary school. And remember, these parents pay for their kids' instruments. The parents want them involved. You're not paying for their instruments. The parents are. You just need to let us teach them. Thank you.
Do you have a motion to close to the public?
There's another card.
This?
No.
Did you call Raymond Moss up? He gave you the card. I'm going to see if I lost him.
He did, no, he called him. He never came up.
Well, he gave another card.
Oh, okay.
He's right there.
So just call that in.
Who's the name?
Raymond Moss, he said. It was, you called him before, but.
Raymond Moss?
Yeah.
Raymond Moss? Raymond Moss?
All right, well, I'll make this short and sweet so we can move on with the rest of our night. So, good evening. So, my name is Raymond Moss. I'm a proud alumni of Washington Township, class of 2016, but I am also known as Mr. Was at Bunker Hill Middle School through the students, the staff, the faculty. During my time as a building sub, I'm still doing it until the end of the year. What I've done is, I was a bathroom monitor, where I make sure that we have proper passes going through it, our systems to securely pass, making sure they're going back to their classrooms, checking if there was any damage done within the bathrooms. Luckily, there's not been tremendous damage or anything and stuff like that, thank God. Being a cafeteria assistant, making sure that students don't steal their food, making sure they're paying for everything, safe when they're outside for seventh grade lunch, making sure that we're a listening ear for them when they need help and everything that needs to be done for them to be successful and need a listening ear wherever it needs to be. Being a librarian, making sure that we check out books, make sure they're continuing without struggle to make sure they're able to get the books they need, but also continue to read new books as well that come in. Being a one-on-one aide as well and helping individuals have success in their classrooms and so much more in providing different instruction for them to make sure they're successful, to understand the material, be able to advocate for them, but also teach them how to self-advocate for themselves. But also being a numerous amount of teachers throughout the different days when they have IEP meetings or whatever it may be. So like, I practically, as a building sub, go and do everything and anything throughout the school at Washington Township in Birches, Bunker Hill Middle School. And like, what the list I have mentioned has shown that we are cutting astronomical roles that are really vital to not just Bunker Hill, but all the middle schools, and we're going to need them to be hired and still be existing for the upcoming school year. If we don't, we are cutting our legs off. We are cutting our legs off. It's really bad. Looking at it through the insights out, it is really bad. Our diverse amount of teachers and students and so much more are going to be highly affected, and we're going to have teachers do, take on more responsibilities than they have to when we have these people for a reason in these roles and stuff. And I am very scared to see of how we would, are going to manage that, but I also, I'm applauding and wanting to see every single board member to go to a middle school or a high school or somewhere to see the product of why we have these positions in place and why we're not, we shouldn't get rid of them. They're really vital and actually serving in those roles during my time as a building sub have shown me that they play a valuable asset of how the school should function and run. And if we get rid of them, it's not going to be on the fault of these people here, it's going to be the fault of all of you voting for something awful to make these changes. But besides my point, I'm a proud alum of this school district. I'm a longtime resident of this town. I am, have no confidence now in your ability to run. to run our school district, but also our Board of Education. But also seeing, within the last several board meetings and everything else and how we're running our meetings, is really awful. And I am just really saddened by that, unfortunately. And, and as I said prior to our meeting, we are a democracy within our town and so much more in how we vote and everything. And we're a community and a family here. And if we have to, and I said this before, if we have to, we will be voting you guys off one by one if we have to. But I know you guys do really excellent work and try your very best. But at this point in time, in seeing everything that's happening, it will come down to a point where we remember your votes, we remember everything you do. And your actions and your votes that you do will cost so much more, and not just the votes of us, but getting rid of you even quicker than you think. Thank you.
Yes, Jerry? Do you have a card?
Although I did not submit a card, I feel totally obligated, and I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge, first and foremost, our appreciation for the board and their willingness to meet with NJEA and try to work things out. But more importantly, if I sound a little bit emotional tonight, or this morning, we recently lost two very, very good friends, two family members to this district. And I would like to acknowledge them. Mr. Jim Jorgensen, as well as Mr. Jerry Huckel. Both fine, great men, who did so much for this district. And I think it's important that we acknowledge them. Perhaps with a moment of silence, if you don't mind, everybody? And I thank you for indulging me.
You had a... You wanted to speak? Sure. We got time.
I just have a quick question before you take a vote. If what... And I'm not a teacher, I'm not an educator. I don't know anything about any of this. If what this gentleman presented, and this is true, that these numbers are different than your numbers, what happens next? That's a pretty big, like, oops, that something was overlooked. So technically, if that comes out to be proven true, what happens next?
Money to spend.
That, that's it? That's all that happened?
Well, then the minute... The administration would get together and decide where that money is gonna be allocated.
And what about all the people that overflowed if that actually doesn't happen?
Well, I'm sure that would be taken into consideration. I mean, you have to faith in our administrators that they're gonna do the right thing.
Okay. I appreciate all that you all can order.
Okay. A motion to close to the public? So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
I like that.
Opposed? Okay, let's see. Report of the superintendent, ask for a motion for items number 1 and 2.
So moved.
Second. Role call or discussion? Role call?
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Instructional affairs. A motion to approve instructional affairs, items number 1 and 2.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Role call?
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Yes. It's okay. All right, no problem. Policy, nothing at this time. Student activities, communication, items number... A motion for items number 1 and 2?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Role call?
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Human resources. A motion to approve items number 1 to 31?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Your office have one. Retirement to recognize Emily Piskin, elementary teacher, 27 years of service. Thank you for your service, Emily.
Role call?
Yeah, Ralph, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, going back to when we had the budget, I voted no for the budget. The budget comes to us with the recommendation. And I'm really struggling with number 31. And the reason why I'm struggling is I kinda did a little exercise prior to coming here. I went back last year, and I looked at the list of people that were being renewed for this year. And I looked at this year's list, and I saw a lot of changes, okay? Where people's hours were cut, where people were in different categories. And I am really struggling, struggling from the beginning, knowing that we have assistants that have worked here, and they actually are vested in the pension, and they lost hours, and they lost their benefits. And these are people who have been very dedicated and working very hard. Also, during the course of this week, I've received information about the concern about the health assistance, the clerical assistance with the guidance. And I'm really struggling with this number 31. I almost feel like going back and trying again to do an amendment where I wasn't able to last, last week. And yet, it was definitely appropriate what I did in terms of Robert's rules. There's a... This number 31 is a recommendation. And you can't change the recommendation. You can only vote on the recommendation. Yet, there are people on that recommendation that are concerned about their jobs, and they wanna know that they have a job. The struggle I have is there, that within that group, there's concerns about people whose jobs were changed, benefits lost, and hours cut. So, the struggle is, how do you vote? And the only hope I have, and I'm glad it worked out, that we're gonna get together with your representatives from NJEA, and we're gonna look and see if there's any money that we could use to restore some of these things. Of course, the other alternative is that the legislature has provided us the one avenue where we could get some money is through raising taxes. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna... My vote is because I want the people to know that are being recommended that to put their worries aside and they have a job. And my hope is that when we meet with the representatives, your representatives from NJEA, and we sit down and talk, and if there's some money, that we're gonna, we're gonna make the adjustments we need to make. So, I just felt it was important to share with you my feelings about this. You know, if I could run out and not vote, I would love to do that. I would love to make a motion to restore everybody. And I don't know if that support's gonna be there or if that even is a good thing to do. I think we have a little door open right now, and we're gonna have to sit down and really look at the numbers and see what we can do. And that's when one of my other fellow board members wanted to make a motion. But other than that, I would just needed to explain to you where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'm, uh, just, so we're clear. I'm on the same page as Connie. I know a major sticking point for us was the idea of cutting people's time so that they don't qualify for benefits and all that. It's, it's something that doesn't sit well with any of us up here. And with the new options that we have between what the NJEA's presented with us, now we're gonna have to sit down with them. And then, you know, nobody likes the idea of raising taxes. So hopefully, we can flesh out something from what the NJA brought forth, and how we can find the money in that. But I know, I can't speak for the board, but for me personally, that's a priority for me, is to make sure we get everybody there.
Yeah, and I think, I think too, just to make another comment, you need to understand that there's only one person that can change your recommendation, and that's the superintendent. I can't make him change his recommendation. I can only vote on the recommendation. And it's really, really something that we've been struggling with for a long time. And I want, I wanna thank everybody for coming out for the last three meetings and people talking to us. For me, it has been very, very helpful. I mean, I, I did, I was in the schools, I know. But to just hear the people come out and speak from the heart and really, really try to express to us that... And the numbers of people that have come out, it's very concerning. Very, very concerning to me as your representative. The morale of this district is very important. I remember back when my daughter had a babysitter. I used to give her good money, top money, because I felt, I wanted her to be happy. I wanted her to do the extra mile, where she feels appreciated. I'm really, really concerned. And I, I like, I like the person who said, you know, "We need a human." I think the more our kids could be in contact with positive adults, adults that care about them and are gonna, gonna reach them in a lot of different ways is so very important. We cannot cut off the relationships that people have with our kids that are helping them grow. So, anyway, I wanted to say that. Thanks.
Any other discussion?
I just wanna say that I agree with them, and I know I took a hit tonight. But when I ran for the board, first of all, I'm 70-years-old. I'm not here thinking about being re-elected in three years. I could be dead in three years or unhealthy. I think I'm here for the right reasons. I don't think I deserved your little cut tonight. This has been one of the hardest things I've ever been in. When you talk about so-called secret meetings, this was what we were talking about, was the support staff and the other cuts. And I voted for the budget. I somewhat regret it, but I'm gonna tell you why I voted for it. At that point, if you even listened to your union representatives, it was a done deal. So if I had voted no, you would've had false hope for maybe a few more weeks until the budget came back from the county. It was either gonna be the same budget, or it was gonna be for less money. So unfortunately, all that we're going through now was the next step once we got to that point. And I can't go into, I'm only a board member, what went on behind the scenes. But a lot of the things that you're talking about were things that we talked about. This isn't an easy thing, and I, I don't know how we're gonna do it, but we're gonna have to try. And I think most of us are committed to seeing what we can do, to change what we can change. But as I said, I, I disagree with you. I think I am here for the right reasons. I think I'm the kind of person that should be on this board. And let me tell you, I am heart sick about this. I'm on double blood pressure medicine, double other medicines, and I haven't slept a night through, can ask my family, since March. My family's worried about my health. But I'm not giving up because I think I love our district, and that is why I'm here.
Okay, role call?
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes, but on number 2, I have to abstain on KH. But yes, everything else?
Mrs. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Finance and facilities, items number 1 to 46, a motion?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
I have a question. Numbers... 14 through 20, those resolutions. I have a question for Dr. Hibbs. Where does that, what account does that money come out of? For those resolutions?
So... That's professionals that are used for special education students. So, the services are budgeted within the different special education program budget account numbers. And they are different professionals we'll use as needed for the students.
Okay, so that's through special education?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I got a few things I'll be abstaining on, and they're all related to conflict, because my wife's a teacher.
Okay. Role call?
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes to everything except for N6, initials EH and GP.
GP. Mrs. Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Special education. Motion to approve items number 1 to 4?
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Role call?
Ms. Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Bloom?
Yes.
Ms. Chilla?
Yes.
Mr. DeMayo?
Yes.
Mr. LaLiberty?
Yes.
Mr. Lindsay?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
Mr. Tomzak?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes. Negotiations, nothing at this time. New business? Any new business?
Ralph, just something really quickly. I just noticed, probably the past few meetings, that under correspondence, we don't have all the correspondence listed. We just don't. I don't know why we're selective. Maybe it's a process. But maybe if we could just, it doesn't have to be now. I know it's late, but it is important that we capture all correspondence from the public, and it's on the agenda. I'm just looking at it, and I know there are items missing. And it may be because, as board members, maybe we're not forwarding it to Lori to make sure that she captures it as correspondence. That's where I think maybe it is. So just, if every board member, if we get correspondence... Sometimes I get correspondence, unfortunately, to my personal email, unfortunately, to my personal email, and then you guys get it to your board email. I can't necessarily say that's correspondence, but you guys have to report it. So I'm just saying it as like a global comment to make sure, I think it's important for the public to make sure that they see the correspondence that we received and then the subject. So, again, if I could just, you know, we should all probably be really responsible. I know we've gotten a lot of correspondence in the past month, but just maybe we should go back and audit our email, our board email, and just make sure that Lori has it and report it, because it's something that we vote on every meeting, and I do, there's just a lot of correspondence that's not here. So, I just wanted to make that point, that it has to go to Lori where she can't capture it.
Do we want to, if Dr. Hibbs or Ralph are copied, do we all need to be forwarding? I just don't want to overload her. You know, usually it's like to all of us, so.
Typically, in the correspondence, usually if, if Ralph is copied, it would be Ralph that would say, Lori, please document this as correspondence. That's typically the way it's been done. So, Scott, I would say if Ralph's on the email, then Ralph should probably be the one that does it, and then if it's one of us, then obviously, then we have to report it. But I don't think it's going to be necessarily, to your point. I, we don't want ten people emailing Lori, but I'd rather have ten people than zero because we have to capture it. I just feel like it's not being captured accurately.
Yeah, send it to me and I'll make sure Lori gets it.
Thanks.
Okay, motion?
I got, I got some stuff for new business.
Sure.
Real quick. All right, so, um, so I went to a couple events at Bell's since our, our latest meeting here. I got to go to the, the talent show, which was pretty cool. Bell's puts on great, great events over there. So the talent show, they even had a DJ, there's, there's a young man who's a DJ, it's awesome. Hit the ice cream social and art show, and then I want to thank Coach Hanlon and his staff for inviting the youth lacrosse team, the boys team, to the game, to, to watch the, the high school team play from the sidelines, it was awesome. I know all of our kids really enjoyed it. So, uh, thanks Coach Hanlon and his staff for that. And that's all I got.
Anything else?
Motion to open to the public?
So moved.
Second.
I got, Nicole, Nicole gave me a card for her to be.
She gave you a card?
And then she left. I think she asked her question.
Yeah, she left.
Well, she said hold up. Okay. I'm going to go get one or two repot.
Go ahead, just go to the microphone and we'll get it.
Sorry, just two quick questions, because this is my first in-person meeting, second video meeting. Last meeting, there were two, I believe, executive sessions where council asked that the board go into closed session. My questions are, are executive sessions and closed sessions recorded? I saw video notices in the agenda, so I wasn't sure if that meant that those are recorded. And then at what point in time is the board's policy to review, and when some things no longer necessarily need to be privileged, that's then made available and those discussions are, are made available to the public? So that's my question. Two questions, I guess.
Yeah, if you captured this state of the law, as you said it, once the confidentiality of the matter that the board went into executive session no longer exists, the minutes from that executive session can be released. But it's not videotaped. I think that was your first question.
Yeah, so, so I guess just, and this is the last question, I won't, no need for back and forth. If the executive session, like where Mr. Weiss asked last week that the board, or recommend the board go, I know there's minutes, but then are there like separate minutes? Because my guess is that some of the minutes can be released because it's public portion, but then you have the closed session, so, like, how would a member like myself of the public know, like, if something from last year, or if the statute of limitations runs out on any of these non-renewed teachers who have their right, and I forget what the name is, but they can like ask to be, go in front of the board? Like, when that runs out, when is that advice, or when is those meeting minutes released? Because it's like a portion of the meeting, not a whole meeting, if that makes sense.
The executive session minutes are kept separate and apart from the public minutes, or the audio, or the video recording, which I, I believe that these are video recorded, right?
These are.
I said the executive session minutes are kept separate and apart from the public minutes. I mean, there's no definitive answer as to when the confidentiality or the confidential nature of why the board went into executive is no longer going to exist, it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay, thank you.
I know it's, it's not traditional, but I want to speak real quick. I just got an email that Coach Stockle got her three-hundredth career win as our head coach of the Minute Maid Lacrosse program. She's been the only lacrosse coach at, at Township since its inception in nineteen ninety-four, thirty-one years of excellence, so, big hand, big hand.
Okay, motion to close to the public?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?